Good evening to you all and welcome to the Tuesday, November 12th, 2019, meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted you all are here with us this evening. If you would be so kind, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Madam Clerk, will you call roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Here. Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Litkinhouse?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Zee?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. All right. Do we have a motion regarding the meeting agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, abstentions, the ayes have it. All right. Let's move on. We do have a busy agenda. The EDA and Planning Commission will be joining us later, and I think it's—might be a long night this evening, so let's get started with things. And actually, with respect to our one proclamation—I'm actually going to read that because my daughter has diabetes, type 1 diabetes—not type 2 diabetes—which I'm going to read the proclamation about—but nonetheless, I'm going to go ahead and read this proclamation. Whereas in the United States, more than 30 million people—including 884,000 in Virginia—have diabetes, a serious disease with potentially life-threatening complications including heart disease, stroke, blindness, kidney disease, and amputation. Whereas an additional 84 million people in the United States are at risk of developing type 2 diabetes. Whereas approximately every 21 seconds, someone in the United States is diagnosed with diabetes. And whereas many families in the city of Falls Church are impacted by diabetes. Whereas an increase in community awareness is necessary to put a stop to the diabetes epidemic. Now therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2019 as American Diabetes Awareness Month in the City of Falls Church, and urge all residents to recognize American Diabetes Awareness Month and be a part of the American Diabetes Association's movement to confront, fight, and most importantly, change the future of this deadly disease. Is there anyone here in the audience from the ADA or any related groups? All right.
We will be forwarding this to the group.
All right. Sounds good. I think that's the last—the one and only proclamation we have this evening. Are there any oaths of office to administer?
No, but Julia Peterson did stop by before the meeting and took her oath of office for the Aurora House Citizens Advisory Committee.
All right. Thank you. So let's move on now to the receipt of public comments. We do have a pretty good stack of comments at the present time. We're going to start, however, with written comments. Madam Clerk, will you do the honors?
Yes. Jacomo O'Neil suggested looking into the use of traffic circles for traffic calming. Frank Burdette supported Ed Henderson's proposal for a mural. Peter Markham of Park Towers wrote about trash pickup at Park Towers and parking enforcement in the area. Diane Feely of Nolan Street urged that budget funds be used for neighborhood traffic calming. Fred Curry of 513 West Broad Street wrote in support of banning motorized scooters on sidewalks. John Tepperman wrote about electric vehicle charging. Kathy Thompson of 502 West Broad Street wrote in support of banning motorized scooters on sidewalks. Rohini Winters of 324 Grove Ave. asks if the NVPRA crossing on Grove Avenue was supposed to be a raised crossing. Sean Dakin of 124 Whittier Circle wrote in support of allowing motorized scooters on sidewalks, as did Richard Sign of 305 West Columbia Street, Allison Hyra, Tim Stevens of 106 Gresham Place, Brian Williams of 311 North Virginia Avenue, and Lee Johnson of 415 Lincoln Avenue.
All right. Thank you very much. We're now going to move on to the receipt of public comments. That's for the folks in the audience here tonight. Already got a pretty good stack of speaker slips. However, if you're not one of those folks and you do want to speak, there are speaker slips out in the hallway out front. If you can, go ahead and fill one out and hand them to the clerk, who won't turn hand them to me. When you get up to speak, we would ask that you keep your comments to three minutes in the interest of time and your fellow speakers, and ask that you state your name and address for the record. Let's go ahead and get started with our speakers. Our first speaker is Jeff Peterson. Welcome.
Jeff Peterson, 205 Tyson Drive. I'm on the board of the Mary Riley Stiles Library, but I'm speaking as a private citizen. I'm here tonight to thank and commend the Council for your leadership in advancing the critical project to expand and renovate the library, and to urge you to give the project final approval in the coming months. I want to make three points. First, the library is busting at the seams and straining to meet demand in too small a space while coping with the steady deterioration of the building. The current project, as proposed, will renovate the existing space and provide over 6,600 square feet of critically needed new space, a 36% increase. Both the renovation and the expansion are essential. It's important to remember that as the city continues its rapid growth, demand for library services is growing and not static. In just the last six years, visits are up 56%. Program attendance is up 108%. Registered borrowers are up 16%, and circulation's up almost 7%. With projections for continued population growth in the city, the library simply can't continue to meet demand from patrons of all ages without expansion, and the current project will provide that. All library services will benefit from the new space, but space increases for children, teens, meetings large and small, and local history are especially notable. The second point is the construction cost of the project is a bit more than we thought —we thought it would be—in 2016, when the project was approved at referendum. But there are very good reasons for the increase. For example, the regional cost of labor and materials, such as steel covered by tariffs, has increased more than expected. The original budget provided for cost increases like that, but not the exceptional increases of the past several years. In addition, the scope of the project has evolved to include work such as the Park Avenue streetscape and the higher standards for energy and environmental design. Today's project is not the project we started with, but it's better, and it also costs a little more. This is not a case of gold plating or careless management. The library board worked with staff to keep costs as low as possible throughout the project. My third and final point is that although the cost of the project has increased somewhat from the projected—original projection, the cost to finance the project has actually decreased. Just this month, the city was able to finalize the funding package at a lower interest rate at a very substantial savings. In sum, this is a critically needed project benefiting all ages of city residents, and it deserves your continued support. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Dave Haggy.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, and thank you, the Council, for the opportunity to speak. Dave Haggy, 306 Shadow Walk, 21995, moved to the city, so two homes. Currently living on Shadow Walk, which is right down the street. And on July the 8th, I remember is that terrible monsoon that we were hit by, and lots of people in the city, throughout the city, not just on West Columbia and Shadow Walk, got hit hard, either with stormwater or sewer problems. And the two homes that I've lived in are not—have not been affected. And I went to my basement, and I looked during that storm, and I was fine. But just because I'm fine doesn't make it okay for everybody else. I'm in residential real estate, as some of you folks might know, and I've sat through quite a few hundred home inspections, and it's upon you, the prospective buyer, to make sure the roof's okay and the basement is dry. But the street stuff, nobody inspects that. It's assumed that things are going to be okay, and if they're not okay, they should be addressed. I know that several council members have already met with neighbors over on West Columbia and Shadow Walk, so that's been much appreciated. And again, it doesn't affect me, but it does affect me because—just because I got lucky and picked the house, it doesn't affect—it doesn't make it any less important that it get taken care of. So I would just ask the Council to use the stormwater money that we pay—I think I pay $600-some dollars a year, and I would hope that most—if not all of it—goes to fixing this problem. It's not going to happen overnight. It might take several years, but we're going to get more July 8ths. That's just a sad fact. Hopefully, we won't have any next year, but we're going to have them at some point. So I would just ask the Council with—you know—and by its heels—to take care—take this issue on right now and make it right, because it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Sandy. Sandy Tarpeian. Welcome.
Nice to be here. Thank you. Congratulations to all of you who re-won your elections, too. Sandy Tarpeian, 105 Great Falls Street, Falls Church. So I'm here tonight because I head up the citizen volunteer—as a citizen volunteer—for the Healthy Habitat Team, and this is the team that has worked to get the city certified as a wildlife habitat community with the National Wildlife Federation. And even though—in—we got that certification originally in 2015—we have to recertify every year with the National Wildlife Federation to show that we're still supporting the kind of efforts that provide food, shelter, water, and nesting sites for the friendly kind of wildlife that we like to bring to the city—the birds, the butterflies, the migratory insects. I'm happy to report that we did get recertified this year with flying colors, as we do every year. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of a list of some of the things that went into this certification, because these are things that involve a lot of different stakeholders. And I think that when we look at them individually, we don't really realize the huge impact that it actually is having, and I get to see that when I put this report together every year. And that's what encourages me so much, is this environmental effort in this community is very widespread, and that—to me—says a lot. So here are some of the things that I submitted. The continued invasive removal and the planting of over 4,500 this year native plants and trees in Cavalier, Crossman, Cherry Hill, Howard Herman, and Madison Parks. These projects have been under the outstanding leadership of Jeremy Edwards, our Green Space Manager, and his team. They have pulled over 200 volunteers together—from businesses, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, students from Mary Ellen Henderson and the high school, various churches, and just interested citizens who come and participate in these activities. And I think this really strengthens the sense of personal involvement and ownership that people have in the community, and it's why they keep doing it. Also, the Veepis Tree Planting Program, led by Veepis volunteer Seth Hemmenway, with the support of City Arborist Kate Reich, and City Operations planted 42 additional native trees to build our street canopy this year. The Cedar Street Neighborhood Garden was a new project this year that brought together over 20 neighbors who wanted to plant a native garden along an unpaved city street that ran behind their property. And that has now become a kind of a nature trail in Dan's backyard. The educational programs that we ran this year on composting, on invasive plants, and stormwater management were conducted by citizen volunteers, the library, various city hall departments, particularly environmental sustainability and urban forestry. We had widespread communication about the Wildlife Habitat Program on the city website and focus on Falls Church, the electronic newsletter. We get wonderful coverage there. Nick gives us some coverage in the news press, which we appreciate, and a lot of this is through the help of the City Communications Department. Girl Scout and Boy Scout projects. I hope you've all noticed the tree labeling that's been going on over around town. Further planting and interpretation of native plants in Cherry Hill Park, a native plant sale, and the creation of a vertical gardening demonstration outside the community center. And then, of course, the continued homeowners who certify their backyards as wildlife habitats. I get that list, and I know that all of you are not on that list. So I would, again, appeal to all of City Council to get their own yards certified. I'm happy to help you with that. Just give me a call. So I just want to say how proud I am of our city and the DNA that keeps us working toward this. We get a lot of news lately about the decline that is going on—not only nationwide, but worldwide—of migratory bird populations, pollinators, butterflies. And yet, at the same time, there is also literature that is saying that by using urban communities that link community to community, backyard to backyard, we are still creating a pathway for these migratory—this migratory wildlife. So I want to thank the Council. I want to thank the city management for their continued support, for the funding and the priority that you give to keeping Falls Church a community wildlife habitat. And as we keep developing, I would implore you to build native plants and trees into our comprehensive plan for residences and commercial properties. Thank you.
All right. And thank you for all the great work you do throughout our—
(inaudible).
All right. Thank you for all your fine work on this regard. Our next speaker is Andrea Comont. Welcome, followed by Bill Ackerman.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor Tarter, Vice Mayor Conley, members of Council. My name's Andrea Comont. My address is 423 Sherrill Avenue. I should say upfront that these are my personal views, not the views of the Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation, on which I serve. I'm here tonight to talk to you about scooters and to urge you to vote against what I consider a regressive change to our city code that would ban them from sidewalks. One of the things that I've admired a lot about this council is its commitment to decision-making that's based on data and research. Unfortunately, I think you might be falling short in this regard when it comes to scooters. Staff has recommended allowing scooters on sidewalks at a limited speed of 6 miles an hour, with street riding encouraged. This recommendation is based on an extensive review of the policies and experiences of neighboring jurisdictions. In ignoring staff's recommendation and moving to ban scooters from sidewalks, council members would be relying on anecdotal evidence and sensational news media coverage informing their judgments, and this is just not the kind of data-based decision-making I've come to expect from you all. In general, I've been disappointed by the negative tenor of discussion about scooters and by what seems like a general willingness to only assume the worst behavior from people who ride them. The people who ride scooters in Falls Church aren't boogeymen. Most likely, they'll be residents—city residents themselves, your neighbors and your constituents. And I think it's important to acknowledge that regardless of where they come from, people who ride scooters are vulnerable road users, and they deserve your protection. I have serious concerns about the safety of scooter users on minor arterial roads such as Annandale, Hillwood—the parts with no bike lane—which is a lot of it—Great Falls, Lincoln, and West Streets, and in other places in the city where there's poor visibility. By banning scooters from sidewalks, you'd be putting riders at risk in these locations. I think we should be passing progressive transportation policies that expand mode choice and ensure the safety of all the people who use our public rights of way, not regressive policies that make it more difficult and less safe for people to opt for a scooter over a car. Our new vision statement says that by 2040, Falls Church will be a leader in multimodal transportation. In my opinion, banning scooters from sidewalks is a step in the wrong direction. I hope this council will get back on track by voting against this change to the ordinance. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for yours. We appreciate it. Our next speaker is Bill Ackerman.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Bill Ackerman, 149 South Spring Street. I am a member of the CACT, but I am speaking on behalf of just myself. I concur with pretty much all the sentiments that Andrea made regarding scooters and scooters on sidewalks. One of the things that we feel like we've done on the CACT is to help the city move forward when it comes to multimodal transportation and giving people choices to be less dependent on cars. The things that we've focused on is, one, bike share. Bringing back the 3T bus, as well as—I think scooters is going to help contribute to choice for those who are what they say is the first mile, last mile problem of getting to the metro. I feel scooters will help that along. One, because it's a better choice than bikes, because for someone who has to work downtown and has to dress more in a formal sense, bikes is tough for me, because I tend to sweat, and that does not work well when it comes to—and I hate bringing change of clothes to work. So I think the scooters help in the fact that it gets you there without having to kind of exert yourself, even though it's probably less healthy for you, but it does solve that problem. I do agree that—I think before we start banning scooters on sidewalks, let's look at the data. It's pretty much inconclusive. Some cities do ban it from sidewalks, some don't. Some actually only allow scooters on sidewalks. So before we overreact and come up with regulations of this, let's figure out whether it is a problem, or is it really just a solution in search of a problem. So thank you for your time, and appreciate all your work that you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your time and your fine work as well, so thank you both. Our next speaker is Larry Craver, followed by Paula Dubill. Welcome.
How do you do? I'm Larry Craver, 309 West Columbia Street. We've had a sewer backup. My wife and I are in our 80s. My wife is being treated for cancer. She's in a maintenance program right now, but after the sewer backup, we were both quite ill for about a week. We have no way to really clean up after it, and it is very challenging to us. I understand from the experts that we have talked with that there are efforts being made to stop this. They identified, I believe, two major problems. One has to do with rainwater in the gutters coming into the sewer system, especially in the older part of the city. This was legal at the time it was done, and the city apparently has no way to enforce them to change that. But they can determine it by invasive means and can determine what might be done. And I think maybe that the council could consider some incentive to assist these homeowners to correct the problem rather than increasing sewer pipes, which may or may not solve the problem. Secondly, there may be cracked pipes, which allows rainwater to enter and increase the flow of water in the sewer system. Apparently, they have not identified these, and I think they really ought to be identified to see how many of them, to see the magnitude of the problem, and then see what can be done about it. I think maybe that there are easier solutions than just otherwise. Do appreciate the effort to put manhole covers to keep the rainwater out, and appreciate other efforts that have gone on in the sewer system. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, as well. Our next speaker is Paula Dubill, followed by Eric Fessler. Welcome.
Good evening. It's so nice to see you all. My first time being in this building. I'm kind of a new arrival to Falls Church. My mother passed away last year, and the house was sold and knocked down, and now a multi-meg mansion is being built in Vienna. But I had to look for a new place to stay, and I found this marvelous home at 307 West Columbia Street. So my name is Paula Dubill, and thanks for allowing me to share. I was affected by the July 8th flood, and I had only just moved into the house a couple months previously, very excited to be in this gorgeous city. And as an artist, an art lecturer, an art educator, it was just exciting because it's so beautiful here. However, because I'm dealing with all of the things after my mother's death, and I'm also still taking care of my father at his nursing home, the flooding situation caused me some distress physically. I ended up with a staph infection, and it was lengthy and uncomfortable. And I do not have health insurance, and I'm trying to build up my income because I'm—you know—would like to have health insurance amongst other things. But anyway, I had to go to the doctor and pay out of pocket to the dermatologist in primary care. Various prescriptions tried: special washing liquid, soap, countless washing of my clothes in hot water and my bedding, ruined clothing, disinfecting surfaces like a fiend, you know, makeup ruined—that's, you know, small—but— And then just the discomfort, the hours and hours of time spent, because I needed to invest that in building my business, and I couldn't do that for a long time. The entire floor below me was torn up and had to be replaced because of all the flooding that came in. All of the furniture had to be taken out. It was just a mess. And I had to deal with all the noise with the hammering and the banging and the drilling to get the floors replaced. A lot of dust. The pets didn't understand why I wouldn't hold them, because I didn't want to spread the germs to my housemates. Had to keep cleaning the kitchen and surfaces, and I was very concerned about my father, because I go to see him—as the sole family member visiting him at his nursing home on a daily basis. He gets 24/7 care. It's a lot of work. And so he's—you know, dependent on my coming, and so I lost work due to the time invested having to deal with this. And so I'm seeking some compensation, and I just want to thank you for letting me share, and I can provide other details later. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Eric Fessler, followed by Patrick Cochrane. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Eric Fessler. I live at 2295 Cardbridge Road, and I'm here on behalf of the Falls Church Young Democrats to speak in support of ordinance TO-19-08, and that is the ordinance to amend Chapter 10 of Cable Television, Article 3, Section 1065-F, and Chapter 22 Housing. I won't read the rest of the title here, but the goal here is we're trying to prevent discrimination based on the term sex. We want it redefined to protect our LGBTQ friends. And I do speak on behalf of the group when I say that we do highly support this move. We view LGBTQ rights as civil rights, and these people definitely need civil rights protections. No one should have to be homeless or unemployed at one of the cable companies that we give a franchise to, just for being who they are. So we certainly hope that you'll consider this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Patrick Cochrane, followed by Carol Leslie Bastian? I'm sorry if I got your name wrong. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Patrick Cochrane. I live at 1850 Columbia Pike, Apartment 220. I'm here as the Chair of the LGBTQ Caucus of the Virginia Young Democrats, and I'm so happy to be joined by the Falls Church Young Democrats, by my partner, Chris, and by my parents, who came all the way from Annapolis, Maryland, to be here with me. I rise in support of T-019-08, clarifying language to define sex to include sexual orientation and gender identity for the purposes of discrimination. I want to give a special thanks to Councilman Phil Duncan, who made sure that this got on the docket today, and as well to the city attorney, Carol Coskry, who drafted the language here. Falls Church was actually my first residence in Virginia when I moved here from Maryland. And one of the things I realized in moving here was that I lost the employment and housing protections that I had in Maryland to come here to be with Chris, my partner. This really shouldn't have crossed my mind when I moved, and I think that for a lot of people, it kind of comes as a surprise that anyone should have to think about this. We've come so far in the last few years on LGBTQ rights. We've won the right for same-sex marriage, and now we have the first openly gay presidential candidate running. And I think people kind of forget that there's still a lot of work to do for LGBT rights around the country. I rise in support of this ordinance because Falls Church can really take a big step towards equality here. We can affirm that discrimination against LGBTQ community— We can affirm that discrimination against LGBTQ community in housing and in employment is wrong in the United States. We can affirm that in Falls Church, you should be able to get married on Saturday, post pictures of that wedding on Sunday, and then not have to worry about being fired or evicted on Monday. I think that we really have a couple of sayings in Virginia that sum this up quite well. When you come into Virginia from Maryland or from any other state, it says Virginia is for lovers. I think that should be for all lovers, and I happen to have a pin here that says "y'all means all." So I really hope that we affirm that "y'all" really does mean "all," at least in Falls Church, and I do hope that the state of Virginia will follow. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Carol Leslie Bastian, okay, and followed by Frankie Crogston.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Excuse me. Thank you very much. I do not have prepared remarks because I feel I said this so much, I probably have it memorized. I live at 304 West Columbia Street. I was a victim of the July 8th sewage backup. I'm very sympathetic with all my neighbors who were affected by stormwater and sewage in some cases. We were not affected by stormwater only because of spending many, many tens of thousands of dollars after five previous incidents. And I have detailed before all the protections. We've done everything. We did, it did cost us over $11,000 to deal with the sewage backup that we had, and we appreciate everything that has been done, especially in the stormwater area, but we realize that the Stormwater Committee you are forming is not dealing with sewage. And letters, excuse me, to city officials have not, or emails have not been answered. Basically, we originally started by hoping that the city could compensate us for some of our loss. We understand now that the total costs are so large that there's probably not much hope of that. But we would like to do our duty to do our part of preventing such future incidents. We hope the city will do their part. We were told to have backwater valves. We consulted plumbers. We cannot get answers of whether there would be any monetary reimbursement if we did this or what kind to have, because our plumbers have told us contradictory things. We need some technical expertise to help us and some promise that this is just not going to keep happening. So I hate to say this, but I want to put sewage in front of you, not just stormwater, lots of sewage. Please, keep it away. And if I'm allowed, I don't know about the rules of P.S., amen to everything Andrea said. I am in favor of scooters on sidewalks.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Our next speaker is Frankie Crogston. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I'm Frankie Crogston. My address is 6729 Crest Place, Falls Church, and I'm here on behalf of the Friends of Falls Church Homeless Shelter, 217 Gordon Road, Falls Church. We'd like to thank all of you, the City Council, as well as our City Manager Wyatt Shields and the Housing and Human Services Division, including Nancy Vincent, Leslin Barrow, Dana Lewis, and Ripa Patel for your support of the shelter, which is opening this Friday, November 15th, as indeed the weather is starting to get quite cold. And as an hypothermia shelter, it will be open through March 31st. It's an evening shelter operating from 6:00 PM or open from 6:00 PM in the evening through 8:00 in the morning until March 31st. There is a dire need in the area which people may not recognize, second only to the district. In the metro DC area, the greatest number of homeless people are in Falls Church and Fairfax County. And to serve this need, as most of you know, the shelter has been open in the city of Falls Church for about 20 years, and we serve 12 residents each night rent-free, thanks to the generosity of the city. We serve about 35 individuals, discreet individuals, over the course of the season, and we have served last year 3,275 hot meals, breakfasts, and dinners. Those are donated meals. Our mission is simple, to better the lives of single homeless adults living in the greater Falls Church area, and we couldn't reach this goal without the support of the city government, City Council, and the many city residents who are volunteers with us. The city provides the space on Gordon Road through the Public Works Department, and hundreds of Falls Church area residents provide volunteer service hours, whether that's serving in the capacity of being that second person you need at the shelter every day, along with our operator in order to legally stay open, or whether it's doing laundry or bringing in supplies to the shelter. Volunteers also help with fundraising, and I'm pleased to announce that we have just voted that we will be holding, for the first time in a few years, a major fundraising event this year, and that will be at the State Theater on February 22nd. Still working on that theme, but it will include music and a silent auction, and we hope to see many of you in the community there. As the little city continues to grow and change and new developments pop up all over town, the Friends would like to ask you to keep our shelter residents in mind as you all consider and approve plans for new development. I know that a homeless shelter isn't the first thing that comes to mind for most developers when they're drawing up plans for an exciting new city center, so that we, so we ask that you remind them and yourselves of what our little city is all about, which is community for all of us. We need more than just food stores, restaurants, and coffee shops to make our village a welcoming place for all. Thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate your support.
Thank you so much. We appreciate the fine work you do. Our next and last speaker is Courtney Newbold. Welcome.
My name is Courtney Brackich Newbold, and I live at 212 South Lee Street. I'm here tonight with my neighbor, Erin Hopewell, and on behalf of many neighbors on South Lee Street. Several weeks ago, I sent to you a message about our traffic concerns for our street, particularly as regards pedestrian safety, which is a big issue, especially for those of us with small children. Erin and I have since filed a petition for traffic calming with the city, collecting signatures from 34 households, which I will say in a pre-election season is a pretty sizable thing. My understanding from Jeff Sykes is that possible traffic calming measures do not include sidewalks, and this is of key importance to us, and so that's what I'm here to talk about tonight. All right. Okay. Do you carry this? I brought a visual. It is not to scale. It is homemade. Because there is a traffic light at West Broad Street, Lee Street is a popular crossing point over Broad. It runs downhill and makes a greater than 90-degree turn to the right. There are absolutely no signs to indicate that a turn is coming, nor that a reduction in speed by drivers is necessary. The street then continues to South Oak Street, to the intersection where there's actually only one stop sign. So the stop sign is on South Lee. There is not a stop sign on South Oak in either direction. South Oak and the speed of traffic traveling down it, it also goes downhill, is also of great concern to us. This is where our neighborhood bus stop is. There is no stop sign, no stop sign, and also no crosswalk for us to cross safely with our children. Between 205 South Lee Street and the intersection with South Oak, and that is quite a sizable slice of the street, there are no sidewalks. I believe that with this proximity to West Broad Street, we are one of the only streets to be this close that does not have sidewalks. They start, they stop for whatever reason, right? Maybe they ran out of concrete, but they stop right here at 205 South Lee Street. On our section of street alone that does not have a sidewalk, we count 17 children. Okay? So there are a lot of children in this area. This portion of street is also very heavily traveled by students who are on their way to DJ Elementary School as walkers, and also by people who are going to use the trail that runs along Trips Run all day long. There are people walking back and forth along there, and all must walk in the road. I'd also point out, we don't have streetlights at that point in the street. There have already been two accidents since my family moved onto South Lee Street in 2012. I live right here. In the first accident, a driver traveling down, I'm not sure which direction, but from Oak Street, turned onto South Lee Street, struck a utility pool on this side of the street, and totaled our car on the other side of the street. Our VW was parked in front of our house. Several years ago, another driver traveling at speed down South Lee Street did not notice that there was a turn there and plowed into the bushes of our neighbors at 217 South Lee Street. Obviously, our concern is not for bushes or for cars. We are a pedestrian-related accident waiting to happen. As the mother of a five-year-old and an eight-year-old who travels this portion of South Lee Street multiple times daily with her children, I urge you to do whatever is necessary to install sidewalks, as well as to support traffic calming measures. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. We appreciate you coming out. All right. Those are our last speakers, at least who are signed up at the present time. When we get, well, we've got a new arrival, a late arrival. Mr. Clinton, you're welcome to speak.
Mayor Tarter, Vice Mayor Conley, just very quickly, there's obviously been a lot of discussion about stormwater and sanitary sewer problems, and as a longstanding sufferer on Hillwood, we think it's a dual problem that should really be in search of a dual solution. So we strongly, you know, we could provide, you know, very unpleasant photographs of what has happened, but I think the problem is pretty well documented. But what we hope it is a dual solution so that we don't come back and say, well, we got part of it right, but we didn't get all of it right. I think it would be a waste of staff resources and the city's resources if we don't look at it holistically, because we know the two are intertwined. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We have another late arrival. All right. Come on down.
Thank you, Council. Todd Friedlander, 801 Hillwood Avenue. And as you've heard from the previous speakers tonight, and as I've reminded council at the September 23rd meeting and two other meetings since, the folks with the sanitary backflow issues into their homes are still here and waiting for answers from the city on how it plans to solve their recurring problems on Hillwood Avenue, Shadow Walk, and West Columbia Streets. After each of my visits with council, I left feeling optimistic that the city understood the importance of determining the actual causes of the sanitary backflow problems in order to come up with possible solutions and their associated construction costs. Based on the feedback I received at those meetings, I felt that I'd made my point that now was the time to look at both the sanitary and storm issues in order to prioritize them together, using the Citizen Task Force as a tool to simplify council's decision-making process. Yet it wasn't until the email I received last week from Mr. Shields that effectively dismissed these assumptions to say that only storm issues will be studied and prioritized, and that the sanitary issues are well-known and may be handled at some future date. I take that to mean the city intends not to do anything differently than what it has been doing for the past 15 years with little success. It is worth pointing out that there is some overlap in the storm and sanitary systems, as in some locations, these lines run parallel and physically next to each other in effectively the same trench. With that duplicity within the same trenches, there can be significant cost savings if you end up needing to fix both the storm and sanitary infrastructure. Rather than excavating and fixing one system only to have to go back at a later date and re-excavate to fix the other system right next to it, looking at both of these together may save the city and taxpayers a significant amount of money. Because of our fears of pedestrian injuries or death, we implement traffic calming measures with urgency and seriousness it deserves. With all due respect, why doesn't the fear of these serious illnesses that have been described tonight due to the backflows provide the same level of motivation for action from city council and city staff? This problem is only going to get worse as our climate appears to be trending to more frequent and more intense rainstorms. I have much more to say, and I am adamant about doing what is right for my house, my neighbors' houses, and the houses of my new friends across town on West Columbia. Because this topic is too detailed to explain during a council meeting, I will be reaching out to each of you individually in an effort to set up a meeting so that we can discuss the sanitary problems that I am aware of, the possible causes, and some potential solutions, all of which could benefit from an outside professional review, as I am not an expert on these issues. I met with Councilman Duncan this past weekend, and our discussion seemed to have helped him better understand the issues, and together, we thought up a few possible paths forward. We need a focused effort to fix this looming public health issue, and we need to get it started right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So that is the last speaker. It is the last speaker for the moment. If you wish to speak on a matter that is going to be heard later this evening, you're also welcome to speak at that time as well. With respect to a lot of the comments we heard tonight, Mr. Shields in the report of the city manager, I believe will be addressing many, if not all, of the general topics that have been raised this evening in his report. So if you want to stick around for a few more minutes, he will be speaking to stormwater management, et cetera, traffic calming, and some other matters. Before I move on to the report of the city manager, which will be happening shortly, I want to ask, are there any council requests? Any member of council, Ms. Hardy?
Thank you, Mayor. The speaker from the Falls Church Homeless Shelter prompted me to remind council that I'd like to propose that we again make Martin Luther Jr. Day a day of service, and hopefully council, and inviting our boards and commissions to participate in a community service event. I think in previous years, we've worked with the homeless shelter and made lunches. We've worked with Homestretch, and so if I could ask staff for some help in finding an organization where we could contribute some hands-on work that day, that would be terrific.
All right. I think it's a great idea, and thank you for your leadership in past years. We greatly appreciate it. Are there other council requests? Okay, let's move on to the report of the city manager, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter. Members of council, in the agenda list that I'll provide, an update on stormwater and traffic calming, and then the financial report. The financial report, if I could defer that to the end of the meeting, Ms. Bawa, their CFO, will join us for that discussion, but she has an obligation earlier. So if we could add that to the agenda, postpone that towards the end of the meeting. So with respect to updates on stormwater and traffic calming, just a few notes on each. First, for stormwater, we have advertised the task force that the city council authorized two weeks ago. We've had a very strong response to that. We have 16 applicants to participate on that task force. The deadline is this Friday, so we thank everybody who has stepped forward for that. We are looking for geographical diversity on this panel and the ability to have a citywide perspective, not just a neighborhood perspective in this work, where we will identify priorities for stormwater improvements where we can do the most good for the most people and improve flood resilience in the city. There were a number of comments tonight about sanitary sewer as being part of this task force, and the rationale for not including sanitary, sort of the realm of sanitary sewer backflow issues in this task force, the rationale behind it is that it is a very different engineering problem, different skill set, and different solutions. And so to keep this work focused on stormwater was by design. I did note in my responses to those who've asked about it, when this group gets together, one of the first things we will do is have an organizational meeting and talk about the And so I did say, you know, let's have a discussion about that with the subject matter experts in the room to talk about what that would mean if we add that to the scope in terms of sort of the timeline for the overall work of that group. So we can have that conversation, and I can keep the council informed in terms of kind of what the group decides with some advice from the engineering firms once we're all around the table together. In terms of what we are doing outside of the work of the task force, we have been doing some of the big improvements to the stormwater system, some of the washed-out flood wall on Trips Run and things like that, and some smaller things that were referenced tonight, such as putting in watertight manhole covers in areas where we know we have ponding on the street from time to time, or that are susceptible to water from the street getting into the system. And we will continue to do operational things to try to improve resiliency. One of the policy questions we have and that we need to bring to council is a program similar to what Alexandria has to help homeowners who are considering a backflow device at their home. And that would be a targeted program for areas where we have documented backflows, where we could provide that assistance. And so we will bring that to, we do need council authorization for that because it does involve the expenditure of funds, but we'll bring that to you as an intermediary. the expenditure of funds, but we'll bring that to you as an intermediate, that's not the solution, but it does provide some additional resilience for homeowners and a direct benefit for homeowners who have been impacted by this in the past. So we will bring that to you as quickly as we can, I think, you know, before the end of this calendar year to have that program stood up. With respect to traffic calming, just a quick update for the city council and the community on this. The CACT's top two projects that have been through the process include improvements at the intersection of Gundry and Annandale and, and a series of improvements on Great Falls and Little Falls Streets. Those are the, sort of the top two that the CACT had identified amongst the projects that are in queue. With respect to Gundry and Annandale, we have met with the neighborhood on the proposed solutions there. There's consensus on that solution, and we'll be moving forward with that project this, this calendar year as weather permits. Essentially, it's a redesign of that intersection. That project will take the lion's share of the council's appropriation for neighborhood traffic calming. We are looking, so what I had reported earlier is using the $680,000 grant that the city had received for traffic calming for the projects in queue. We will also be bringing a budget amendment to council to consider possible use of funds for traffic calming in the current fiscal year. When we have looked at this grant, this grant actually is slow, as I noted the first time I mentioned it. There's going to be many hoops we'll have to jump through, and it's also more suitable for the grant to do a package of projects that are proximate to each other. And so I'll just note, the current state of staff's thinking is, is to try to use local dollars through a budget amendment, if the council approves it, to handle spot improvements on the project, on the streets that are in queue. And that includes Nolan Street, just as an example. And use the grant to do a suite of improvements along sort of a basket of streets. And so one that we've received applications through the NTC program for almost all of the theater streets to South Washington Street. So that would include Cameron, George Mason, Marshall, Jackson, and Rosemary. We've either have projects that have gone through the petition process or phone calls of neighbors who are initiating the petition process. So a use of the grant could be to bundle all of those together to have kind of a comprehensive approach because the fact is, if you do effective measures on one street, it'll push traffic probably one block over. And we'll need to work with the neighborhoods on that because, again, the drawback of using the grant funds is it's going to take us a while to work through that. But, so our thinking is, local funds for the projects that are, have already been through the petition process, spot improvements there, and the grant to do that basket of projects in the Greenway Downs neighborhood. With respect to Nolan, I will just note that we have, as I've reported earlier, the police have met with the neighbors. We have had traffic enforcement on that street. We currently have a device on the street to take updated traffic counts, and we'll be sharing that data in a couple of, and we want to have it out there for two weeks, and then we'll share that data and what we've, we've learned from, from it in terms of when we sit down with the neighborhood or meet on the street about possible spot improvements that we can make, we'll share that data with them as well. I think that is the, sort of the highlights of what I wanted to report on tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Mr. Snyder?
Thanks a lot, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me if I express some impatience here on both of these topics, both the stormwater and the traffic calming, but I think I will. I think it's been said by city management from the beginning that the sewer backup is a separate issue requiring urgent activity. Yet again, our citizens have to be here tonight as they have prior nights, and I guess I want some timeframes around when we're going to address this issue, how we're going to address it, so that our citizens don't have to come back to us yet another night to express their concerns on an issue that we have already indicated is a serious issue. So that would be point number one, and I have to express some impatience with that. I don't want to have our citizens have to come back to us again without us having a clear plan with money to address it, number one. Number two, on traffic calming, same kind of thing. The folks on South Lee have said repeatedly, they've come to us, they've written emails, it seems to be a serious safety issue. When are we going to address that, Nolan, and the other areas? So again, I don't want them to have to come back yet again to address us. I want a plan with money involved. We have a surplus. We know we have a surplus. In both of these cases, it seems to me, our citizens want action. They want their money, the tax money spent in that way. And so I think we just need to move and get it done. Thank you.
Ms. Hardy?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the update. Why, so I agree with the hybrid funding approach by using both the federal money and the local dollars. I would share some of the frustration around timing. I saw that on our agenda, the budget amendment is now pushed out to January. So we've been hearing from people the past several months that they would like to see these local dollars put to use quicker than that. And so I would ask that we figure out a solution, actually either bring the budgetman earlier or figure out whether we need to do two so that we can deploy the dollars faster. Because I think this week we heard from South Lee, three weeks ago we heard from Nolan, I think in between there we heard from Rosemary, and so the queue's only getting longer. So I think clearly we need to unclog the queue. And then also, as we start thinking about the FY21 budget season, we've also heard lots of requests for sidewalks. And I think as the NTC process doesn't handle sidewalks, in the past I've suggested that we actually carve out money in the budget, similar to how we have set aside dedicated money for traffic calming. I like to make sure that we actually set aside money for sidewalk program so that neighborhoods could also compete for a dedicated set of funds so we can continue doing more sidewalk across the city. So something that reminds you again as we think about the budget process for next year. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Lipton House?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Third in line, but I'm going to pile on. A couple of questions first. Do we have any efforts underway, Mr. Shields, to study the sanitary backflow issues? I know I've seen email traffic and some debate over how the, the dual problem of stormwater next to sanitary, and I know it's not included in this stormwater think group that we're going to be evaluating, but do we have any efforts underway from an engineering perspective to evaluate that? Specifically, Mr. Friedlander, his comments made tonight?
We do not.
Okay. Are we, are we planning on doing that? To at least study the problem so we can identify whether or not it is something we should be addressing?
The, when we have studied this in the past, we've studied it through figuring, you know, identifying where is the water coming from? And the water is coming from, generally from private property. And so the, the policy discussion is to, how do we get the, the private property owners to fix cracked laterals or disconnect sump pumps? Those are generally the two ways that the water's getting into the system. And so I think that is the policy question that we need to address. I think the timing is right to address it. It will take, I think, probably, if we're going to have a program to help homeowners put in backflow devices, we have a program to help people fix their laterals or disconnect sump pumps. That program is going to take long, the reason I think backflows need to be part of the solution is because getting these private homeowners to do it is going to take time. And it's something that I think over 10 years, you see an improvement. Will it make an improvement over two years? You know, it just takes a while to get these homeowners to do it.
Okay. I think it would just be good to have some type of unified communication and, and resolution so we can at least see that we're going to get from point A to point B. Everyone may not agree that how we get from point A to point B is right for everyone, but to Mr. Snyder's point, you know, we've had folks in here for weeks, months, debating this issue and certainly raising concerns. And I would, I would like to see some solution for us at least to be able to make a decision on if it's, if it's a policy decision, something I'd like to see in front of council sooner rather than later, so we're not dragging, dragging people through the fits and throws of, of debating the same point over and over. To, to the folks on, on South Lee specifically, I sympathize. I live on Seton Lane. I walk his street on a daily basis when the weather's nice. That is my route to council meeting when I'm walking. And it is a very, very dangerous street. And where the sidewalk ends, and when it turns, it is very dangerous for kids, adults, and the like. And you have to find refuge between cars and curbs to be able to guard yourself from folks that may be coming around and not paying attention. So I certainly sympathize. Do we have, you know, I'm not even going to ask that question because I knew the answer. My request would be similar to Ms. Hardy's request. I understand the balance between grant and actual cash and surplus, and I understand that sidewalks are not part of the NTC process. But as we get into fiscal year 2021 budget conversations, I for one want to make sure that we are setting aside money in the budget that is appropriate to deal with remedying these types of situations. As it relates to the continuation of sidewalks on South Lee, it is certainly on my radar and something that I will be pushing for. As with a lot of these issues, certainly with conversation of where the surplus money goes, we have to prioritize, we have to triage. But I do recognize the fact that is an incredibly dangerous stretch of street that does not have adequate sidewalks. That is, as you can imagine, a fairly laborious process in terms of taking land, building sidewalks, and coordinating that from an engineering perspective. But please know that it certainly does have my, my full attention. The timing of, specific to the timing of the grants, Mr. Shields, for some of the projects related to the group of, the basket of projects, as you describe it, for the feeder streets coming from South Washington, can you, can you remind me again, and those in the audience, what the timing of that grant would be and how that would play out?
So it would be an effort over the winter months to identify the solutions with the neighbors. The VDOT, we, our experience with VDOT, to turn around any types of paperwork with them is six months. And so I think probably the best-case scenario would be this time next year, we'd be implementing solutions. If they're, if they're, you know, if they're curb realignments and sort of heavier solutions that we arrive at with the neighbors. If they're lower-key solutions of signage, paint on the streets, and speed humps, then that, that is something that goes faster. But if you're redesigning street intersections, that's where the, it's going to be a little bit slower. One thing that with the VDOT grant, they will need stamped engineered plans. And so that's one other step in the process. We have, with the NTC program, we're trying to move away from that and, and really just go with sketches on paper and hand those to the contractors, and, and they can build them. But using the grant funds, you'll need to have stamped plans.
So my request would be out of a bit of frustration as well, which is, I feel like that there are certain light solutions, short-term, I shouldn't say short-term fixes, but quick fixes that we could make that wouldn't necessarily conflict with what we may do in terms of a larger grant type of, of heavy solution. If that is paint, if that is signs, if we can do that, I feel like a year is a very, very long time for us to implement some things where public safety is an issue. And so there are light solutions that we can pay for, again, that would not conflict with some of the heavier solutions that may come through a grant program. I would ask that we put those on paper with the plan of attack, with money attached to it, and at least implement those in the near term while we're waiting for some of the larger, heavier solutions. I feel like that's something that we're agile enough to be able to handle, to be able to fix some of these problems so we can at the very least see some progress. And again, I feel like we have the ability to do that. So I want to thank all the neighbors and folks from around the city that have continued to show up week after week to talk about these. Certainly know that it is on our radar and certainly appreciate all of the emails, even the ones that we may not be able to, to respond to immediately. But I do appreciate it and understand that these concerns are, are very real.
All right. Thank you. So we've got comments on this side, too. Why don't we start with Mr. Z and then work our way back this way?
Well, this seems to be a, a topic with, with no ending here. To the city manager's defense, I would, for whatever reason, I would say that, and for all the citizens that have come forward here, that the course of the next few months, we need to spend planning, and we need to hire engineering services, and we need to spend the money to get that done because no one wants to do excavation or pour concrete or do any kind of underground work in the middle of winter. It just has the cost of doing that. It's a practical concern. But come spring, when the weather improves, I think that we've, we've heard enough, and I think it's a sentiment of council at this point, that we recognize that a lot of time has passed without, without satisfaction. And, you know, what I've heard is that the culpability for this situation is not only resident with the city, but also with the landowners. And it's probably time to, for the city to exercise some of its police powers and do the inspections necessary. If people are dumping gallons of stormwater into our sanitary sewer system, that needs to stop. If there are fixes that can be done, that can be paid for, collectively, we should seek those. If there are things that we can do, taking advantage of our purchases to scale and to get the citizens who are most affected to contribute at a reduced cost, we should do that as well. All of which goes to say that, you know, that we have, as a little city, grown up, and we are going to get many more people, and the issues of our single-family residences should be addressed and should be addressed in a timely fashion. So if we can get the engineering done, we should spend the money now and then proceed on fixes in the spring. And if you've tried for the last 10 years, or maybe since Councilmember Snyder first came on council, well before my time certainly, but this is an issue that has never been resolved by our wishing that it would just go away. So we need to take some action at this point. We need to recognize our position in the greater region and, and act accordingly. And if we have to spend some money, and if we have to bond, and if we have to increase the amount of fees going to stormwater, and if we have to raise taxes, that we should go ahead and consider that. We should debate that as policy action. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Duncan.
I could just, Mr. Shields, pull you down to the weeds of the calendar a little bit. Back to what you said about the intermediate solution of backflows. We had to take some action, you said. Is that a first and second reading activity, or is, I'm just looking at the calendar, we only have one formal meeting left this year. Is it possible to fit in what you said before December the 9th or on December the 9th?
December the 9th. We, it's not a two-reading item, it's an authorization for a program.
Okay. So we would be able to act on that no later than December 9th?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The second question, the stormwater task force, does it have a official picked-by startup date yet? Is that this year, or is that thought to be after the holidays?
We want to have the organizational meeting in December, before the holidays.
Okay.
And then the substantive work of the prioritization of projects would be in the January and February time.
So do you think that the organizational meeting would occur before council's meeting on the 9th? Just be nice by the meeting on the 9th, since that's our last meeting of the year, to give us the opportunity for a public check-in on that? Is that reasonable to assume?
Well, that's right. So the Appointments Committee is going to be working overtime to, to meet with the people who've set forward, and, and so, you know, we want to have that, that list complete and have that group appointed and moving forward.
Okay.
So December is when we, we're shooting to have our organizational meeting with the group that's been selected.
Okay.
So Mr. Duncan, as a member of the Appointments Committee, I think all three of us are very committed to making sure that we get through that selection as quickly as possible. A lot of email exchanges today to make sure that happens, considering how important it is. So you've certainly got my commitment.
Appreciate all the hard work the Appointments Committee is doing in this regard.
We have 21 applicants with four days left to run. So those of you who are thinking of applying, you've got four days left to apply. So let's get that number to a point where we're giving up our evenings willy-nilly, as it were.
Would love nothing more. Mr. Z?
Okay, thank you. The only final thought I had, some years ago, I think maybe even before my time on council, there was such a thing as the Utilities Committee. council, there was such a thing as the Utilities Committee of the City Council. I don't know what it did. It may have, in that era, been mostly about the water system and the water sale and the water fight and all of that. But I think as we move forward, in the same way that we have the Transportation Committee, which is the first line of defense on neighborhood traffic calming, and we see that, you know, they can, they're doing their best and are, you know, having trouble keeping up with demand, we might think about a Utilities Committee that would meet at least quarterly to provide, you know, more opportunity for check-in than we are able to deliver at settings like this. I've said the rest of my piece to the residents when I've visited them on the site visits, so I'll leave that aside. Just wanted to add on the water issue. I just wanted to add East Columbia to the list. I think some of us got an email with a video this week of a woman who, you know, showed a car passing her car, which was trailing slowly behind a bicycle on Columbia Street. You know, it's like, it's incredible how badly people behave. But the Nolan situation is basically people going to Nolan to Columbia and then, you know, east from there. So there really is, you know, an almost unlimited supply of streets which have these issues. One other question, if I could, the apps that people are using now to get around traffic, if there's anything we can do to communicate with the creators of those apps, Waze, and so forth, or if we actually have to put new signage in before we get their attention to not steer traffic through our residential neighborhoods, I would like to know more about that from the CACT folks and anybody on staff who could help us with that. Thanks.
All right, Mr. Z had one additional.
I do have one further addition, which is mindful of the process questions that Councilmember Duncan raised, that I for one am willing to participate in a special session that's currently unscheduled with full council to consider and to vote on matters that are before us to, in order to accelerate the city's action on these issues that we've heard discussed tonight with respect to the stormwater sewer and traffic calming.
All right, Vice Mayor Connolly.
I think I get the wrap-up here, or you have stuff. Thank you, Mr. Shields, for those reports. They are very thorough, and I know there are a lot of steps that we are walking through to accomplish stormwater management, sewer water management, and traffic calming, all big issues that affect lots of individuals across the city. And my request is that in addition to the report you just gave to us, will this all be on the website so that people can easily find it if they're not at this meeting tonight? Or if they miss something, can they go back and find all the things that we've made and promises that we've made so that they can track what we're doing as well?
The stormwater webpage is up to date. And, you know, with the advertisement for the task force, we did a scrub of it just to make sure it was easy to navigate. And the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, that website also is up to date with the projects that are in queue. And what I've reported tonight really is, we do need to update with that information about that strategy. We need to have a few more conversations. The CACT is meeting also. We'll brief them on it as well and then get back with all the neighbors.
Thank you for that. And will that be up, like, this week?
In terms of this, that strategy of using local dollars for one set of problems and grant funds, we do need the council's action on that before we make that promise. We can express that as a plan, but before we sort of say that is the plan, we need to
Okay.
get the council's stamp of approval on that. And we also need some dollars associated with it. What practically can we get done? And so we've got a little bit more work to do to have a decent budget for what the ask would be with local dollars for the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program in this fiscal year and then in next year's budget.
Okay.
But we'll be getting to you with that quickly.
And then for Lee Street, is Lee Street in the queue now? They said they submitted a petition. Does that mean they're in the queue? Are they almost in the queue? How does that work?
So let me check with Mr. Sykes. He did mention it to me this morning, and he mentioned it in the context of the request was for a sidewalk, and that's not one of the solutions in the NTC program. So I don't know exactly what that means in terms of whether there are other things we would do. Or very often, what we're doing with the NTC is rebuilding intersections to make them more pedestrian-friendly and get the pedestrians more visible to the traffic, and it also calms the traffic down. Is the sidewalk part of that set of solutions? I think what we really need is a program to address sidewalk deficiencies in the city. We did it this year with the $100,000 for spot improvements, and we're doing the TJ sidewalk and the South Maple sidewalk. But if we continue that program, then we can hit, you know, more each year, which I think is something for us to work towards.
Okay.
All right, T, I don't think there's a whole lot more for me to add. I think it's all been pretty much said. But I would, A, like to thank all the citizens who've come out tonight, but also in past nights. I think all of us on council are very sympathetic to your circumstance, and we all walk the city and we, you know, we see what's going on and we're trying to address those issues. And we're trying to do them as quickly as possible. And as you've heard tonight, we'd, I think, all like to accelerate solutions to the problems we've discussed tonight. And I think the city manager, with city council, with community input, we're going to try to do that collectively. So we look forward to hearing more from you, and we hope that you'll continue to update us and the community as much as we can. And let's all work together to get this job done as soon as possible. So we do have the developer, the 10 acres, they're supposed to be here at 8:30. Obviously, they're not here just yet. But I thought maybe we'd go ahead. Oh, U.S.R. here, you're out in the back, okay. Are they ready to come in and proceed? Why don't we take a short break while they're coming in, setting up, and welcoming our friends, welcome our friends as well from the EDA and the Planning Commission? And are there any boards and other boards and commissions as well joining us? I know, but we've got some folks from, yeah. Let's go ahead and do that, T. Why don't we, while we're waiting for them to come in, why don't we take a brief few minutes and move on to the first business item on the agenda? The, yeah, why don't we go ahead and do that? Can we bang that out real quick?
Mr. Mayor, and that is a first reading item. It got dropped into the wrong section of the agenda, but I can read that if you want to.
Who's responsible for that?
I guess that would be me.
Okay.
Thank you for pointing that out.
All right. So why don't we go ahead and hit that?
Okay, we have TO 19-08, Ordinance to amend Chapter 10 Cable Television, Article 3, Section 10-65F, and Chapter 22 Housing, Article 4, Section 22-77 of the Code of the City of Falls Church, to clarify the definition of the term sex in regards to discrimination.
All right, Mr. Shields, do you have a staff report? Ms. Messner?
I can, I will handle this one. This is something that came out of some advice I provided to council. As you know, in Virginia, we rely on Dillon's Rule, which means the city council does not have authority to act unless it is specifically granted that authority by the General Assembly. And the city council does not have authority to prohibit discrimination based on sexual orientation, per se. However, in recent years, courts have begun recognizing that, in fact, discrimination based on sexual orientation, on transgender status, et cetera, is, in fact, a form of discrimination based on sex. Therefore, and the council does have authority to prohibit discrimination based on sex. And we have done so in the housing ordinance and in certain provisions of the ordinance on cable television. And therefore, the ordinances that we've proposed for first reading tonight in this item would define discrimination based on sex to include these other kinds of discrimination. Courts have accepted these arguments in many cases, and a couple of other jurisdictions in Virginia have adopted provisions like this where the definition is clarified. So this proposed amendment would clarify that the city intends to prohibit all types of sex discrimination, whether they be based on sexual orientation, transgender status, et cetera. And so these are recommended now for first reading. They were requested by council to be brought before you. I believe Mr. Duncan did that.
All right, do we have any questions, comments? I'm going to open it up to public comment in just a moment, but yes, Ms. Hardy.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Duncan, for spearheading this. I think this is a no-brainer for us, so I absolutely support this. A question for the city attorney. Since we are adding this clarification of sex for cable TV employment and housing, do we look at employment in general?
We do not, we just looked at the ordinances that we currently have that prohibit discrimination. Within the city's internal rules for its own employment, we do include sexual orientation today because that is not an ordinance, except for it governs your internal practices, and that already exists. So what this does is, these are the only two places where discrimination is prohibited in ordinances that affect outside people, and therefore, these are the two that would be addressed to make this change.
So we don't have an ordinance for private businesses in the city that prohibit discrimination-based and those protected classes?
That's correct.
Should we have one?
We can certainly consider that. You do have some authority to have a human rights ordinance, and they are enforceable to some degree. The city does not have one at this time.
Okay. So I won't add it for tonight, but it seems like it would make sense for us to be protecting employment against all the other protected classes. So maybe something we can consider post-January 2020, because I expect the General Assembly will make more progress here, too.
Yes, they may do that. And the type of ordinance you can have is somewhat limited, but we can, it will require a little bit more work and analysis, but we will get started on that.
Great, yeah, because I think I support absolutely cable TV employment, but I'd like to broaden that to all private employment in the city. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lichtenhouse.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Cochran and his friends for coming and speaking out on this. I support this amendment. I oppose discrimination of any kind, whether it's sexual orientation, transgender status, and other civil rights. So you've got my support, so I wanted to go on the record with that. Thank you.
All right, who else do we have here? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Cochran, for bringing this to our attention. Thank you for bringing your partner and your friends and your family, and we're all happy to have you here. Yes, this is the next step on a long road forward. Hopefully, as a result of last week's election, we'll be able to move down that road a little more quickly and more expansively. But for here, right here and right now, we do what we can. So whenever all comments are finished, I'd like to make a motion.
Why don't you go ahead and make a motion, and I will hold that.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move the grant first reading TO 19-08, schedule second reading and public hearing for the December 9th, 2019 regular meeting, and advertise the same according to law.
Second.
All right, we have a second. Before we finish up, are there any public comments to be made? I know folks have spoken earlier. Seeing none, the matter is close to the public. Are there any additional comments from council members? I would like to, again, thank Mr. Duncan for bringing this, taking the leadership and bringing this forward. It is a matter of basic human rights and basic human dignity, so I will support this as well. Madam Clerk, will you call? Vote, please.
Yes, sir. Ms. Connolly.
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yeah.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, thank you very much. So now we will move on to our joint work session. Ms. Messner, is that what you're getting ready for? All right, so why don't we take a short break and let our friends from different boards and commissions, I know Planning Commission, EDA, were specifically invited. We've got some folks from some other boards and commissions in the audience. You're welcome to come forward as well and join the formal conversation about the new, revised, or updated 10-acre development. Yep, come on down. So we'll take a short break and reconvene in a work session in just about five minutes. But there are displays on both sides of the room that you can see their presentation and their proposal. But anyway, let's get started. So, Mr. Shields, how is this planned? Is staff going to do a report first, or are we moving straight to the developer?
Well, we do have a staff report that just sets the stage as to what we are doing now. This is a preview of a site plan that we anticipate will be formally filed in January. And so tonight really is just a chance to get this out for the council to see it. The whole team just came from the school board, so the school board got the first presentation, and the EDA and the Planning Commission all around to hear it together. But again, this is just a preview to get comment on it, that the development team will then sort of process that comment. I think we anticipate another round of presentation in December before the formal site plan filing in January. I'll also note that we have a town hall meeting planned tomorrow night, the 13th, and everybody is welcome for that, but that is, we're targeting all of the boards and commissions to try to get good representation in the room to get the same information that we'll get tonight for all the boards and commissions and the public. We've also informed our neighbors in Fairfax County, and we've also informed neighboring property owners so that they are aware that these previews are happening and that they're invited to come and see them and think about them and comment on them as well. So Carly, is there anything else that we should say before we turn it over to the team? So.
Mr. Shields, can I just, sorry, I'm over here. You do have mics on the table, and I just wanted to let you know that they are all live. There's no push button on them, so they should be able to pick up any conversation with you all. Thank you.
Before I move on to the developer's presentation, for the benefit of the public, Mr. Shields, could you just give a short recitation of procedurally, kind of where we are right now? In other words, we've approved previously essentially like a conceptual design, and now we're in a more specific, detailed process. But could you maybe just, for the benefit of the public, give a very brief recitation of where we are procedurally in the process?
Yes, on, in July, the city council approved what we call the special exception entitlements after the Planning Commission's review and all the board and commission's review and recommendations on it. What that did was set sort of the big blocks of the development. It also set the densities, it set the square footages of the various uses, and it laid out a conceptual plan, as the mayor noted. It also contained voluntary concessions that were approved as part of that entitlement. So now we're going into the, what we're used to seeing at the site plan level, where we'll get into architecture, where we'll get into the details of how this project will feel and what the experience of it will be, but all within the envelope and under the umbrella of what's already been approved with the entitlements that were approved back in the summer. The site plan process is anticipated to be between a six and a nine-month-long process, and it'll kick off in January.
All right, thank you very much. So now let's turn it over to our developer team. Welcome back. I know you guys have been busy over these past months, and we're very anxious to see what you all have in store for us. So with that, I don't know, Evan, would you like to get started?
Yeah, thank you all for having us. It is a little strange having you, like, sitting right behind me. But anyway, so Evan Goldman from EYA, and my, this is here purely just so I can keep time, so I'm not checking my email while I'm talking to all of you. And I hadn't asked, is there a time period or timeframe that you'd like us to stick to? Our presentation we just gave the school board was about 30, 40 minutes, because it's a lot of stuff.
Why don't you get started, and we'll see how it goes.
Okay, so, so once again, Evan Goldman from EYA.
Laura Schoenfeld from Hoffman and Associates.
And we have.
Murphy Antoine with Torty Gallison Partners.
And Karen White with Walter Phillips.
And also, as you know, Robin Bederall has been involved in this project heavily. She's on maternity leave starting last Friday, which is why she's not here tonight. But she'll be back in action in a few months, and Laura's been working on the project for months, or a year, if not more, with us, so she's fully up to speed. And so we're really excited. Tonight, we're going to talk about a few things. Number one, a little bit of the direction we've taken, things from a place-making and planning perspective. And then, secondly, some very preliminary architecture. And what you'll see on architecture is, it's stylistic, it's black and white images. We're not getting, we haven't gotten too far ahead of the, haven't put the cart too far ahead of the horse yet. The goal is to really get some initial feedback of thoughts about our direction, and then we'll come back in in December with a lot more detail, and then obviously file in January and have a series of hearings with all of you. So that's the plan for today. There's only two changes from the, I would say relatively minor changes from where we were at the SE that we filed, so you'll see those as well. And we really look forward to getting feedback from everybody. And we're very excited that our first kind of new presentation of the project evolving is in this great new room, since all of our other meetings are in the other room. So thank you, we're excited about it. Okay, with that, let's go for it. So this map, you're all familiar with the area. There's three properties. There's three properties that connect the metro to Route Seven, one of which is the high school site, Ten Acres. You have then the seven to eight acre Virginia Tech parcel, which is being developed by Rushmark in coordination with Virginia Tech. And then the third parcel is Womata's parcel, which connects from Virginia Tech all the way to the metro. And when we originally submitted our RFQ response to the city way back almost two years ago, we talked about this larger vision of the whole forty acres ultimately being developed and creating that access to transit that's so critical. So one of the nice things or key things that's occurred since last we met was that Rushmark, EYA, and P and Hoffman have teamed together and have been selected as the developer of the Womata parcel now. So that concept is really coming together. We're working with Rushmark on a regular basis at this point, weekly coordinating infrastructure, coordinating streets, making sure that this whole thing will feel like one big neighborhood. And we know that it goes over the lines between Fairfax and the county and the city of Falls Church, but to the average person that's going to come visit the space on a regular basis, it's going to feel like one big neighborhood, and that's really important from an infrastructure and transportation perspective as well. So just so you're aware, you have staff members who've been attending meetings at the county as they've started rolling out their thoughts for what they're going to do or what we will do on the Womata and Virginia Tech parcel, and obviously, we have the city's interests in mind as we do that as well. So this is an overall view of the forty acres. You can see we really haven't gotten into designing buildings or blocking anything on those two parcels, but you can get a sense for the idea of the street grid continuing through all the parcels and connecting from Haycock all the way to Route Seven. You can see the end getting all the way to the metro station itself, and then this idea of the commons, which is one of the kind of strong drivers of our initial project plan, continuing through the next parcel on Virginia Tech and creating this great kind of eight-hundred-foot-long acre and a half park space right in the middle of the project we're really excited about. So I won't dwell on this, because this will be future meetings from the county's perspective, and it's very preliminary, but you can just get a sense of where things are heading. So this is what we had submitted for the commons back in with our S E submission, and it generally hasn't changed, but we'll start getting into a little bit more detail. So the reason you haven't seen us for the last few months is we've been spending a lot of time getting into more detail about how the commons can function, what it should look and feel like. We've met with your Parks and Recreation folks, we've met with your historic folks, and we've started to get some feedback from the community about what this space might want to be when it grows up. And we've had a number of creative sessions, and then as part of that, Torty Gallus, along with land design, has led a placemaking effort on our behalf. So this was one of the initial kind of charrette drawings that came out of that placemaking process, and it's essentially a, you know, black and white drawing of the commons as we started throwing different ideas of what might want to be there, from butterfly gardens to chessboards, to gathering spaces, to swings, to lawns, to all the things that are going to make this commons feel like a great space. I'm sorry, going back one. And there's different zones within the commons. It's a big enough space, you know, that whole room, when we close it down for events, will be almost two acres. That central spine is just about an acre, and so it's large enough that we can create these little zones throughout. The far left zone being largely about stormwater management and about creating an entrance and a gateway to the project, then flowing into a node that's, that in the future will be all about children. Right now, that's shown as the food and beverage zone. You'll see that this morphs into our presentation in a few slides. The big open space in the center, and then a kind of an active park, park play area for adults, which is called that food and beverage area, which will have outdoor games, and then the play area for kids. Some of these have moved around, but I'll just walk you through kind of our thought process as we went through it. So that first piece, as you come off of Route Seven, we know that a lot of what we had heard from the community was this idea of a gateway, some really awesome piece of artwork. These are not what we're proposing. This is just ideas of the types of things that we thought were interesting and, you know, ways to create an entrance that is unique and interesting and a gateway to the project. These images are part of that as well, which is about stormwater management. So as we've delved into placemaking, an area we'd like to explore, we think we want ahead, is having placema, I'm sorry, stormwater management be part of the placemaking of the commons, whether it's through the art we choose, the water features we choose, the way we handle open space. We've been working with the schools as well, and so the idea of having places for them to actually do education on the environment, education on stormwater management, out within the common spaces of the commons during the day, was something that they found very interesting as well and appealing. And so what you're looking at here in the upper left is, you know, this kind of seating areas that are actually stormwater management devices. So when it's raining, that's got water in it, and it's obviously not a place you're going to sit, but most of the year, most of the day, when it's not pouring, you can sit out there and eat your lunch, your kids can run and play, enjoy it. Same with the bottom right image, which is a stormwater management facility as well that literally feels and looks like a park with some steps going down into it. So we think that there are ways to create stormwater management that has dual purposes, so that it's, we're not just creating, you know, obviously retention ponds or creating spaces that are more useful throughout the year. And then even thinking on the bottom left, how do we use water, water as well? So that's a retail kiosk, in that case with a green roof where the water spills off the roof into the stormwater management facility, and so doing things of that sort as well throughout the project. You'll see some further images of that in a moment or two. As we move a little bit further along in the commons to the second zone, there's a kiosk. Our thought with that retail kiosk is it's, you know, whether it's ice cream or it's coffee, it's something that's going to be activated throughout the day on the roof, having green roof that actually spills over where you see the green and you see the water capture. That green roof, in this case, running into a runnel, which is that long linear horizontal depression in the concrete, where that water then goes into a stormwater management facility. So you're starting to visually see the way we're treating, the way we're capturing water and the way we're handling water throughout the site, but they also become things that kids can play with, where there's water in that runnel, it becomes something that's fun. People can, you know, enjoy it, hear the sound of water in the background as it's trickling through, and then have that green roof really be something that's visible, the trellis element for sun and shade as well, so that those outdoor spaces aren't just in the bright hot sun as we become a hotter space. They also have quite a bit of shade within the common spaces as well, and that was something we had heard, quite frankly, from some community members along the way, too. Getting a little deeper into the part, into the space, this was our gaming zone initially. We've now moved this, so you'll see where this ends up in a moment, but this idea of having engaging spaces that, you know, during the day are great for kids and the night are great for evenings, one of the phrases we've been using a lot is ageless play, so having things that are great for all parts of the community. And we know that Falls Church has an amazing school system and a really big family orientation to it, but it also has seniors and older people and people that want to, that don't have kids or younger people that we're trying to attract. So we want to have things that work for everybody. And these images, you're seeing the chessboard, that's a project from Federal Realty in California, you know, the outdoor ping pong, the Scrabble. There are things we can do, some of which will be permanent, some of which might move with events, come in and out, but creating opportunities in those outdoor spaces. That example from Santana Row, the chessboard, just to give you an idea, Federal Realty in that case actually had created a series of chessboards around that chessboard that were actual championship-style chessboard tables, and those tables are now being used by the local chess clubs to do their tournaments outside. So you'll have kids and, you know, adults playing with the large oversized chessboard while there's tournaments going around with people watching. So we think there's ways to engage with the schools, engage with the city, engage with the community to create regular rhythm of events that are happening in the commons. So it might be on a Tuesday afternoon, you show up and you see a chess tournament going on or something, and on a Thursday, you see yoga going on in the park, and on a Friday, there's, you know, the robotics team from the high school designing or displaying their new robotics award-winning experiment. So we really want to make sure that there's activations, and people see something new every time they come. As we move into the open green space, that upper left image was something we really loved, these hillsides, these terraced hillsides, which you could imagine on movie night, leaning back and sitting and watching a movie on the hillside. You could also imagine kids playing on it. And so thinking, once again, ageless, how do we make things that are interesting for folks? Seating benches that can be used as barriers to keep kids corralled, but also to be intimate benches or seating areas. Shade structures for when it gets really hot and sunny. The bottom right is an art piece in Baltimore that was installed recently. It's a tin can that's crushed, that looks like a beautiful piece of shining art during the day, but is also, you know, a wonderful place that kids play on as well. So really thinking about how different pieces we install and use here can be used by different people throughout the day. All of these are just samples from around the country. These aren't what we're proposing here necessarily, so that'll come, of course, at a later date. The open space, so something that's flexible. You're seeing on the bottom left yoga, you're seeing on the upper left movie night, you know, little pieces of art and sculpture spread throughout, so whether it's the avocado seats or the bunnies or something where there's, and people can engage with art within the space, but then having a large enough open space that we can handle events. We'll show you what that looks like in a moment. And then as we now cross, getting almost to Mustang Alley, this is the kind of adult play zone, I'd say, where you have these outdoor bench seating, similar to something that they're doing in the school itself, which can be a classroom during the day for, you know, groups of twelve to twenty sitting outside and learning, can be a place where parents and me can come and watch, you know, a music act or a juggler, can be a place where adults eat their lunch midday from the office buildings and kind of peer over the park space. You're seeing a fire pit from the wharf, which has been a really fantastic gathering space, especially evenings and weekends in the winter. We want to make sure we're creating spaces that don't have this park be activated seven or eight months a year. We really need to think about twelve months a year, and what do we do in the wintertime to make sure that people still want to come and sit outside and be part of the community? That's one of the most successful parts of the wharf, where people actually sit outside and have mushroom, mushrooms, marshmallows and smores. They eat mushrooms. They have mushrooms with their marshmallows. It's delicious. On the upper right, you're seeing these swing elements, that's also from the wharf, and so we have some places where we've programmed that in as well. And then this is now moved, but we definitely wanted some sort of water element for kids. We know how hot it gets in the summer in Falls Church and in D.C. in general, so having some place where kids can play. But thinking about the bottom left image here, you know, what does that splash park become in the winter? And in this case, it's a Chinese walking circle, which is a great exercise and fitness idea, but then, you know, it's also attractive and pretty looking. It's not just some, you know, ugly splash pad. So thinking about how those pieces can last throughout the year. Seating throughout, bench seating, we're going to have seniors on site in our senior housing project. I imagine we'll have a bunch of empty nesters living in the buildings, and so making sure there's places that people can sit and watch and be seen and enjoy is really important as well. And then art throughout, so this is representative just from projects around the country we've been looking at, not necessarily for what we would do here, but the idea of there being art, murals, working with local artists as well, and things where people have those kind of Instagrammable moments where they know they're in Falls Church and they take this great image of their kids in front of the butterfly wings. Butterfly wings are very overdone, so that's not what we're proposing here, but the idea of something, we don't know what it is, and we'll work with all of you over the next few years to figure that out. And then there's some of those sculptural images, that upper left one, the second one in, and the bottom left, we thought those were kind of funny, since we have so much hills going up to the commons from Route Seven, I'm sorry, from Haycock, that twenty-three to twenty-six-foot slope, you know, do we do something fun with art that, you know, it's like you're climbing up the wall or something that's interesting, that engages and kind of tells a story of the fact that we know it's a little steep there, but you're going to get there, you're going to arrive. The upper right image is just bike racks where, you know, the last bike rack is modified and looks like a lock. So there's cute things and fun things we can do with placemaking where, as people show up, they'll see something new and different every time. So after studying the commons and doing this placemaking, series of placemaking exercises, we came up with a slightly different version of the commons. Oh, nice, this works really well. So instead of having, we want people to meander through the commons, so while there'll be sidewalks going straight on both sides of the commons, as you would normally have up against the retail, in the center, we want the sidewalk to meander through and create these little moments and rooms that are different experiences along the way in little zones. And that's a way for you to kind of slow down and experience the commons in a different way. Along the edges, we have our bike lanes running straight either way, and so you can always walk straight through the commons as well, but we like this idea of meandering. And it led us to, I keep putting the wrong image in here, there we go. It led us to a plan for the commons that's slightly different from, from the prior version and has the central plaza space, these kind of hillside terraces. Once again, this is preliminary. These are swings along the edge of the commons that actually you can sit out and swing out over the green space. We have a kind of a hardscape area, which is where the more adult game area would be the chessboards and play areas. We pushed that further into the property in order to create a larger open space that can be for events. This kind of two-story retail kiosk space with outdoor restaurant seating on the roof, and then you can see those white stairs going up to the roof, which is that kind of bleacher seating where we can have classes or have people sitting outside and enjoying themselves. You're seeing a fire pit, you're seeing a ping pong table, so movable furniture throughout. And then as you get here, that kind of cafe zone with the green roof spilling out over to the splash park. And so we combine those, if you're getting ice cream or coffee, you can imagine watching your kid playing in the stormwater management zone, so that this can become a little bit more of a kid's zone, and this becomes a little bit more of an adult play zone. Both will function for each at different parts of the day, but they'll be a little bit more directed in that way. And then you're seeing a kind of a very heavy stormwater management zone with these kind of wood bridges that cross over, so they create these kind of pretty terracing and levels throughout. And what's also, we started thinking about is how does this space become a bigger space? How does it become something larger for events? And so here you're seeing on movie nights, this is a half-acre space for movies. All of those little white dots are people, so to give you a sense of scale, it's a pretty big space. And so, you know, you can handle a movie night for a few hundred people with a movie screen down here, and this whole space being open, the terraced hills, the plaza area, the bleachers people can sit on, the outdoor restaurant, if you get a great table, you can actually watch the movie while you're eating food. So that ability for this whole thing to feel like one space, and for, in this case, the roads to still function around it so that everybody's getting through and around the project, with the exception of closing this one part of the street right here. For another, for smaller events, you know, food truck rallies, things of that sort, the ability to close down these lanes and actually get the food trucks right out on the street and have that be a gathering space right here, where we might close these down during a Friday or Saturday. For larger events, this is also about an acre and a quarter, where you actually close those streets down here and here, so you might have a concert at a band stage right here, and this whole thing closes down and becomes a very large gathering space. We still keep this open and functioning. All of the garages in the project, as you know from the beginning, have been designed so they have access without having to get on the commons, specifically for evenings and weekends, you know, once or twice a month, we might close those down for big events, working with the city. Battle of the Bands. We've spent some time working with the schools to understand all the great amenities that you're building within the high school, from their theater program to their music program to their, they actually have a bunch of bands within the school itself, to the robotics club, to their chess club. So thinking about, you know, do we do events that are, you know, Battle of the Bands? Do we open up to the community? And this is a, this is now a two-acre space, almost two acres, 1.9 acres, where you can set up a series of stages throughout the entire space and really have a huge festival. So it gives the city a space that they just don't have today, something really large that can be programmed. In Taste of Falls Church, you know, an event you already have in the city, could easily fit in this space as well, and then engage the restaurants that are going to be surrounding that area. So that's kind of from a placemaking perspective and a commons design perspective where we've been heading. The reason this is a little bit more detailed than what you're going to see on architecture is that, as you know, the S E S P actually locks in the site plan itself, the landscape materials, the hardscape materials, so this needs to be a little bit further developed when we submit our S E S P, and then we'll go through a process with all of you over the next six months and get feedback and input, so that when we get our S E S P, that becomes your permit, so you can start building site work. And so that's why this is a little bit more further developed at this point. So now getting into architecture, and as I said, these are, you know, these are kind of our first sketch of architecture. We're not showing color, we're not showing material. It's really about form and massing and what it might look and feel like. And this is an overall massing view of the site coming from the corner of Haycock and Seven, the wood frame residential building here with the grocery on the first floor, and so that's still the plan, that hasn't changed. The condo building is the second building here, office on Route Seven. You've got a hotel in the middle, the second smaller residential building. You've got the hotel in the middle, the second smaller residential building. The reason the senior housing building doesn't have any architecture on it yet is we've selected our senior housing partner, and so they're just now catching up and getting up to speed on architecture. So that will follow about a month or two behind us and you'll start seeing that as well. And then we've kind of ghosted in the future phases of the Phase 2 office, Phase 2 residential building. And you're also seeing here a ghosting in of the slightly higher office building than what we've originally proposed. And so to the extent we have interest from additional office tenants and are able to build a bigger office building, we'd like to have that flexibility, as I'm sure all of you would as well, because I know you want as much commercial as possible for tax revenue. And so we've kind of thought about that and how that might work. That might be an alternate plan within our SESP that gives us that flexibility. So this building right here is a seven-story office building that could go to nine or 10. And that way, if we get, you know, we've been talking already to potential office tenants, so to the extent there's somebody that's bigger, that's of real interest, we could increase the size and height of that building without having to go back through an approval process.
Right. So just to clarify, that in the SCE, we're approved for 15 stories for all of those buildings, but we're showing kind of where we realistically think it could land.
That's right. Yeah, thank you, Laura. Another view, just looking at the Commons and the entrance. And we'll talk a lot tonight, or a little bit tonight, about this One Earth entrance, which we're really excited about where that heads. And I'll show you that in a moment. We're now looking from the school itself towards the project. So this was something we just spent some time on with the school board. We've really held exactly to what we proposed in the SCE. These buildings haven't changed in form or size or dimension, so they were very happy about that. A long Mustang Alley going towards the school. So that above-grade garage, which used to sit right here in front of the school, is now here. And the schools liked the concept of doing something that's art-oriented as an entrance and gateway to the school. And so we've thought, you know, working with the schools on what that might be, we don't know, but we'll work on that over the next six to nine months with everybody. And then this is just looking at the Commons itself, in the open space and the varying heights of the buildings, the varying types of architecture as you go through the Commons We're going to get into actual architecture for each of the buildings in a moment, so we'll go into each detail in each one. But starting with the plan, there are two, really three, plan changes that I wanted to highlight here. The first is this, which is we've, we had a cut through that went straight through the building. We've now angled that cut through underneath the condo. So that's a pedestrian path that gets you to the entrance to the grocery store, which is here. There's an entrance here for the grocery as well as here. And so, and then the slope, you know, you enter at a lower level here and come up an escalator, you enter it on grade here. And so the, our retail partner, Regency, wanted the grocery to have a connection to the Commons and the retail so that if you're shopping, you can walk right out through that via into the heart of the Commons. Or if you're an office, you know, employee and you want to grab lunch or go to the grocery store, it's kind of an easy way to get there without having to go all the way around to Route 7. So you're starting to see that. We've also added within there the condo lobby so that that's part of that space and it's activated. And in, we've started really liking this concept, we've moved a secondary apartment lobby here as well, so that you have your main apartment lobby down here and you have a second lobby right here so that those tenants can come right out to the One Earth and across to the Commons as well. So that's the first change. The second change is this area here, which used to just be an alley. And where we've gone with this now is we were going to have an office lobby here and an office lobby here. And as Hoffen and Associates started really studying this, they felt like this was feeling like an appendage, the extra office building. And so instead, they've, and the hotel lobby used to be here, they've created this one space here that becomes the hotel lobby, music venue lobby, office lobby, office lobby, so that that becomes this really cool space that'll have nice paving and be really attractive and have green space behind it. You can kind of see the green space right here. So it's an extension of the Commons essentially that extends out like this. It's a little bit quieter than the excitement of the Commons, but creates a really nice address. And it means that in the future, when office employees come out of that building, they come right out to here and walk straight through to the Commons. It won't be named Alley 2, we'll have obviously some interesting name for it. But anyway, something that is a change from the original plan. And then the third one, which is the largest change, has to deal with our grade issues. And so as we started studying the project in more detail, we have 26 feet of grade from here all the way up to here. And it was presenting, as we started designing the building, some pretty major issues with handicap accessibility. So Street A was getting upwards of a 10% to 11% grade slope, which is from an ADA perspective and a handicap perspective, handicap accessibility perspective was starting to become an issue. We could do it as an alley and not encourage pedestrians to be on that street, but we started feeling like that could open us up to lawsuits, it could, just may not be the type of inclusion we want. And then secondly, we were sloping here down seven feet just to make that a 10% slope. So by doing that, our retail was starting to step down and it stopped us from having outdoor, flat outdoor café zones and it stopped us from having, we started having all these slab breaks within the retail. And the Commons, in our view, has to be this pristine, perfect retail environment, like this needs to be exactly how you want to do retail. And so after studying this for months, we came up with this idea, which is something we did at Pike and Rose, it's something that was used in Bethesda Row, which is we created a pedestrian connection going all the way through. We created an elevator connection as well so that there's still that connection all the way through to the federal realty property. And then we use the garage itself as a way to pick up the grade. So you come in off Haycock at the lowest level of the garage and you come in off Street A at the third level of that garage. And you can circulate through it, you can also come out at Mustang Alley as well. And so it creates more porosity for the vehicles that are in the space, but it creates a better pedestrian connection and environment as well that's flat and not handicap, not a 10% slope.
Evan, what's the slope on the main drive now?
So this is like a foot to two feet. It's almost nothing. This is a foot, right? It's 1%.
Yeah.
Which is like almost nothing, it's perfect. And then it goes from here, it gets a little steeper as you get here towards Mustang Alley. I think we're at 401 here?
403.
403, and we're where, 399?
Yeah, yep.
So it's four feet across the entire Commons, which is 500 feet long, so it's really good. So we should be able to do outdoor café along that whole zone, we should be able to do great flat retail, which is really flexible, and I just didn't want to compromise that.
Evan?
Mm-hmm.
Can I get from Haycock Road through the garage? Can you back up one?
Mm-hmm.
If I'm driving?
Yeah, why don't I, I'll show you an image, a 3D image of what that will look like in a moment.
Okay.
If that's, I can share that with you. But yes, you can get through it. Open air, not through the garage, like a passageway. Actually, we already talked about this, so this is just the highlight of that zone right here that we're creating. And we'll have more detail on that when we submit our SESP. So now getting into architecture of the individual buildings, starting with the grocery building, oh, sorry, the grocery building, the apartment building at the corner of Haycock and 7. The precedent images we've been looking at, since it's a long, relatively flat building or short building, we looked at some warehouse precedents, some brick warehouse precedents, both more traditional to slightly modern interpretations of a warehouse. We looked at how people handled corners and chamfers and things of that sort. And so these are some of the images that we liked as precedents. And where we started heading architecturally was breaking this into three different buildings. So you have one building here, that is the prime building at the corner. You have a second building here, which we'll show you a detail of in a moment, and a third building here. There's also a fourth building within the One Earth. So each of those facades, they set in and out, they have different articulations and they'll feel and read like different buildings, different colors. So the main building is this kind of, you'd call this kind of the warehouse building that had existed forever, that was the original building that was here, if we're going to tell the story of it. We then created an overbuild on top of it. And so the warehouse building being the first four floors and then something above it. The grocery is sitting along this entire edge here, so you're kind of seeing that grocery engaging the corner. And then we have a chamfered corner because of the, where the site has that angle, property line sets back there and for visibility. But one of the buildings we're really excited about is here at the One Earth. Kind of creating, since the One Earth wants to feel like this smaller, more intimate space, we created this little building, you can almost think about it, you know, when you're in New York, before there was parking, you know, in every building and you had these little 25-foot wide lots in New York City and Boston and DC downtown, these kind of small, special filler buildings. And so it's a place where you do more detail, we have balconies, you have lights going across the One Earth here and that creates this kind of special space at the grocery store entrance. So this is one of the entrances, and then this is the second entrance to that grocery store. And the idea is that this entrance is their market component where you can spill out and have outdoor seating that spills into the One Earth as well. So it becomes a little bit of a festival street. You're seeing a slightly simpler building out in the distance in the One Earth, since this is only 40 feet wide, your loading is underneath this building and the condo loading is across. So this is more of an alley space back here, whereas this is a more celebrated space in the front with different materials and looks quite different. That secondary residential entrance is right here that we were showing through the, through the via. And then the third building is a more modern interpretation of a warehouse. So it has some similar window elements, but becomes a little bit simpler. We've kind of created a punch-out in the building for the residential entrance so that that really stands proud. We're still working through what that's going to look and feel like. You'll see more generations of what that might feel like shortly. But this is then that entrance coming in off Haycock where the garage is in front of you. We'll do placemaking on this, we haven't designed that, so this is just a placeholder. But you're now seeing that staircase going up into an open-air space that goes through to the One Earth. So that's your pedestrian connection, or you go into the garage and use the elevator to come up and go out the other entrance. So there's a handicap accessibility access to the elevators that are part of the garage, or you can come up, if you're a pedestrian, you can walk up the stairs if you're not using an elevator. So there's kind of two means of entrance and to get you through.
Or in the car, you ramp up as well. So that was part of your question?
Yeah, exactly.
So you can get through by the ramping and you can also get over to Mustang Alley.
That's right. Okay, the second building, we'll hand this over to Laura for the Hoffen buildings.
Perfect. Yes. So the next building over is the condo building, and we wanted to make sure that it related to the apartment building, but still had a bit of a different character. So we went with a slightly more modern look to this, and then I'll also get a little bit more into the via, the arcade that kind of brings the Commons together to the grocer. So first to our precedent images, again, we still wanted something that was very clean, geometric, but you can see some of the detailing in some of these, like the windows that are set back a little bit with different brick detailing, or here it's kind of a metal panel detailing at the, at the window. We wanted to articulate some of the details a little bit more because, again, also it's a smaller building than its next-door neighbor. Still looking at a lot of kind of classic materials and classic color palettes that you can see in these images. So this is again a black and white image. We are still working on the colors and the materials, but you can, this is kind of looking from the Commons. This is, this is Route 7, this is the Commons looking at it. So we have, it's kind of all one uniform idea, but still a push and pull of geometry to make the building a little bit more interesting, and then how the balconies are set back, but still a bit proud of the building also will provide visual interest. So beyond the via, I'm actually going to go to the next slide because it's a little bit easier to see both pieces. So this is standing in the Commons, kind of looking down the via arcade space. Go back here for a second, which is, you're going through there, that's the same view. But on the second floor, we've put the amenity space out here, and actually what you're seeing kind of in white, that's not the straight line here, is a green space that's going to be part of the amenity space. And we actually are looking to design it to spill over a little bit onto what is the retail below so that you really, you have this steady geometric form that still is interesting looking up here, but you have this kind of glowing glass centerpiece for the amenity space and the via, and then this organic look of the, of the greenery that's spilling over. And it allows the condo residents to feel a little bit more connected to the Commons, but also the Commons to feel a little bit more connected to the building. And just like Evan was talking about, kind of our alley rethink on the other side with the office and the hotel, we want, the Commons is really important, but we want to create a lot of other smaller, special areas within, within the site. So again, you have the via space, this is basically where the condo entrance is going to be, we're still working on the exact geometry of this. And then you imagine looking through here and you're seeing the grocer entrance and people sitting outside having coffee and really enjoying the café area that Evan was mentioning.
And also, just one thing to point out there, as Laura was saying, the idea with that green space up there is you can actually physically see it from the Commons itself.
It's here, yeah.
It's like, it's three-dimensional, it's not just flat, so that it gives you that green feeling about the retail.
Kind of those rolling hills like Evan was showing in part of the central space for the Commons. So this is just an example again of, you can kind of see how the precedent images translate into some of the facade ideas that we're working through right now. So maybe it's two different, maybe a brick, maybe a metal panel, two different contrasting materials with some additional detailing by putting layers of the material. And then again, the balcony is sitting a bit proud to provide another kind of geometric step on the, on the facade. Then going across the street to the office, we wanted to, first of all, highlight kind of coming into the Commons, if you think about, if you're looking to the right when you come in on the Commons, you have this kind of, what we were just looking at where the building steps back a little bit. We wanted to kind of go a different direction on the other side and provide a bit of a curve that kind of brings your eye visually into the space. So we actually have this angled piece that sits on the office building. So before we get to that, our precedent images, we think that people who are, oh, sorry, we think that people who are coming to Falls Church to be office tenants, they want something that's clean and modern feeling, but not necessarily a glass tower that you would see in Tyson's Corner. So we wanted to make sure that we are speaking with still kind of a timeless language, but also our own unique language that works with all the other buildings that we're talking about. So we're looking at kind of different detailing to emphasize some of the glass and the openness, but also to provide kind of a geometric patterning. Again, you can see how the same geometric idea is working in these, all these different buildings in different ways to be interesting, but still cohesive. So going to the next slide, so this is the Commons view that we were just looking at in the 3D image. So you see, we have the full retail bay here with a bit of an accent, and then we're actually working to have, again, that angled piece out here. This, we have two different facades on this building. So this facade on the Commons is going to be more of the glass. The white pieces you're seeing in that are maybe a metal panel or something else that provides a little bit more visual interest and patterning to this side. And they actually, at this, as we're designing it right now, as you get to the angled part, they kind of get a little bit smaller, so it visually emphasizes this angled piece right here. Then we have the other facade, which is still, again, speaking even at a bit of a bigger scale to some of the pieces that Evan was discussing with the modern warehouse feel where you still, you know, each of these may be housed two or three floors, and then there's internal mullions to break it up, but it allows, again, two different facades to give visual interest on, in the building. So if you imagine you're driving down Leesburg Pike, you're kind of seeing both of these pieces and then this retail right underneath it. So again, as Evan noted in the alley study, which again, we'll have a better name for the alley soon, as you come down Commons, you actually go around the corner, so you're coming around the corner, and this is where the entrance is to the office, helping us create that node on Alley 3 and also making sure that we have a really strong retail presence and opportunity along Commons. These are just a couple more images of different views that we're working through on the office. And then next, we have the hotel. We are still working through an agreement with our hotel brand, so we are not announcing it at this time, but we have another component to it beyond just the typical retail, which is a portion of the civic requirement is being found in this building. About 8,000 square feet interior of, again, we're looking at it as a combined, maybe music event, we're still working through exactly what it would be. And then there's actually about 4,000 square feet of outdoor terrace here, which, just like I was explaining with the condo building, is again, another connection at the second floor back to the Commons to extend that excitement and feeling a little bit more into the building. So precedent images for this, these bottom ones kind of tell the general story, which is we have this two-story component that's actually 30 feet tall, so a pretty large-scale two-story component that houses the retail at the first floor and the civic space that I was just mentioning on the second floor. And then we have the hotel that goes up to seven stories and kind of will sit back a little bit from that. So we're still working on the architectural detailing, but as you can see in the two precedent images here, we think at least at the retail/civic space that there's an opportunity to make it maybe feel like it's a bit of an older brick building, maybe a little bit of detailing, something like, you know, these brick arches or some mullion patterning that's actually not standard, a little bit like an older building, that will then set it apart from the materials of the building that are, that will be the hotel that sits behind it. So this is actually a little bit easier to see. So we are standing at the Commons, kind of with the condo, everything to our back. So you're seeing this one-story retail with the outdoor space on top. Again, 4,000 square feet is quite a large outdoor space, and then the civic in here, and then this is kind of a similar view. You're looking then up with the hotel component there. All right, back to the other rental building.
Okay, so the last building is the smaller rental building. And while a lot of the architecture you've seen so far has been more traditional, more brick, more warehouse style-oriented, this is a building where we want to go more modern because it's a younger demographic. It's closest to the metro, it's a smaller building, and it'll be a nice contrast to some of the other work you're seeing. These are two buildings, kind of high-designed, modern buildings, one of which is in Minneapolis, one of which is in Portland. And this mix of the highlight, high-grade white materials, the black windows, this kind of wood element are things we really picked up and liked about those precedent images. This is a, this is from Pike and Rose that Federal Realty did on Rockville Pike. And so the idea of doing something like this, there may be some mural opportunities on this building since it'll be white and so it'll be the ability to have a high contrast to it and then complementing it with some sort of a panel material that then also makes the white really jump. This is a early sketch where we're headed with this building, we're along the commons, so you're looking in this direction. You're seeing this kind of screen in front of the residential building where some of the balconies actually are popped behind, some of the windows go straight to it. It's set one level below the tallest part of the building, and so that kind of brings down the height of that building a little bit. And it floats above the retail, which is down below, you can see all the retail on the first floor, and creates this kind of modern end to the commons. It actually curves a little bit as well. And then in the next image, you're starting to see the tower element here. So, you know, we have a tower at the entrance to the grocery store building on Route seven in Haycock. This is one of our other major entrance features, which is coming south from the Virginia Tech parcel on the new Commons Road, Commons Drive, whatever that ends up being called. We wanted to have some sort of separated tower element here as well. And so that's kind of a modern interpretation of a tower versus the more traditional version. You can see the balconies there as well. And then this is the image looking from the high school plaza. And so you're seeing that picking up the white again over here, the panel, more modern element on the back of the the residential building here, the lower elements where the residential entrance is here. This is the civic space or that the music school that we've been talking about for so long. And so in this case, what we, you know, we even picked up on the idea of kind of it has a piano key feel to it. And so it starts playing off what the tenant inside that space might actually look and feel like. You then see the amenity space for the residential building up above it. And so this was something our placemaking team in Tortigales came up with from an architectural perspective, and we really fell in love with it. The tenant we've been talking to for that building really loves the concept as well and thought it was really fun and unique. So that's, that's this building. It's the most modern building that we have on the project. And so we think it's a potentially unique opportunity. And that is the entire presentation. So any questions or comments? We'd love to have them.
I imagine we do, but let's start with our friends and the boards and commissions that are seated around the table with you. Bob, you're first up. I don't know if you want to take the first cut.
I'll try to speak clearly into the microphone. First of all, I think these plans are fantastic. I find myself these days bragging a lot to my fellow developers about how great Falls Church is going to be with this development. I like the architecture a lot. The biggest question I have at this point is while we're not anywhere near into the weeds, I I believe that the music thing that you ended up with, the music venue, will be very important because it's one of the things that does double duty. It will be very important for the schools, it'll be very important for the community. And I'm wondering where you are in dealing with whoever it is you're dealing with. We all have ideas about who that might be, but I'm not asking you to be specific, but I'm concerned that there hasn't been any real, it's essentially one of the voluntary concessions. And we all know that in the end, council representing the community will have to decide how that bucket of goodies gets divided between affordable housing, between schools, all those kinds of things. And obviously, this is one of the, what I believe to be a key part of the of the project. I thought your ideas for the different segments were terrific, but that's the one thing I'm hoping we can kind of bore down on sooner than later.
Okay. And do you want us to answer questions or just have them go and then?
If you've got a brief response, I mean, we've got a whole bunch more to do tonight, but if you can bang it out, sure, but if it's going to take a long time.
So 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 we'll get, we'll get back, you will get more clarity on that as we go through the process. We're still working with a whole bunch of potential tenants for those types of spaces. So yeah, give us time on that.
All right.
Real quick, you have lots of public activity shown and lots of good images. Do you have any video of a like development that might give some sense of reality that people could see this working somewhere? It really feels like, you know, a lot of stuff that over time may or may not work depending on, you know, people's interest in coming to a place like this. I know you've got the Bethesda project, Pike and Rose, but that doesn't have as much activity.
Well, that has tons of activity now.
But not as much as I think as you're projecting here.
Similar, yeah, we can, we can provide examples, but Santana Row in California is a great example. If you looked at that online, that would give you a great sense. Bethesda Row and Pike and Rose were both great examples. The Wharf had a whole nother scale, which was Hopkins Project. Sherrlington's another good example.
But there's some real-time, real-time stuff that you can look at that gives you a sense of it.
Yeah, there's, and there's other great examples in Green Bay, there's a new project that just opened that's interesting, and Culver City, California, there's another similar project. So these mixed-use projects at this scale are being built around the region and our open space was modeled after the concepts that we're seeing that are being successful.
But I think I'll also just say that we want to make sure, just like we're working to make the architecture timeless, we're working to make the commons space both of now, but also flexible for the future. And I think some of the things even that Evan was showing in how the different spaces could be used for, I don't know, a food truck rally is going to be a thing in 20 years? Who knows? But there are a lot, there's a lot of flexibility in the planning that gives open space for whatever's coming in the future too. So we want to make sure to be future-proofed.
So yeah, let me just echo comments already. I love the plan. You guys have done a great job. So in the the months in between since year last year, so good work. You know, overall, really like the plan. I really love what you're you're doing to address the grades. I think it'd be a huge mistake to have the road cut through with that kind of grade to it. So and the, you know, the welcoming entrance that you have with the stairwells coming from Haycock, you know, for pedestrian access, I think it's very inviting. So I think that makes a lot of sense. Put your focus on the main common drive as you have and the retail boulevard. I think it's going to be a lot more successful and then also making that, you know, main retail boulevard flatter and, you know, that's, it's just going to contribute, as you all know, which is why you're proposing it. It's going to make for a much better plan. The other two changes you proposed to, you know, I like those as well. Putting the office entrances off of the retail area just leaves more space for retail. I think that's going to make it a more successful commons drive, also gives a nice little front door to the office. So that makes a lot of sense and the cut through seems good. Really like the Wharf idea. I'm not sure if you're looking at two-siding, the retail just at the edge of Route seven, but that would be nice if possible. If not.
Yeah, there's retail both edges there.
Perfect. And then I think the, my last comment, I had a couple of quick questions, but my last comment was I really do like the vision for each of the buildings that you presented. I think the the one question I would have is just on the hotel, and I think maybe it's because it hasn't been developed. The hotel just seemed a little flatter and kind of less interesting than the other buildings. The other buildings had a really nice story, good character, good creativity. So yeah, I assume that's going to be a next round.
That one's a little further behind you.
Exactly. Yeah, so no surprises there. But but yeah, I thought the visions for the buildings and, you know, both having some, you know, modern flair as well as some more traditional concepts, the the more you can mix it up, it's, I think it's going to really contribute to the overall placemaking. Two quick questions. What, the first one is what is the interim plan for the B3 parcel? And that's the, that's the phase two office building. And then my second question is what is, or could you talk at all about, to the extent you can, the expected timing of the Virginia Tech and the Womata development and how that kind of, that that's going to really help the success of this project even more. So it's very interesting to me to see how quickly you think that that could potentially follow.
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to. So really briefly, the interim plan for B3, we've been working with the schools, so that will be parking for the schools temporarily, a portion of it. And a portion of it will be kind of staging of materials and construct for construction. And, you know, that in the future will be a great big office building. So that that's the interim use. The second question on the timing for Virginia Tech and Womata, so the county has laid out a process time, which is to get through the comprehensive plan amendment by next summer. So six to eight months from now, that will set the potential zoning and the density.
Will that be both the?
Both Womata and Virginia Tech. Yep, we're doing it together.
Incredible.
We're doing it together. The goal then would be to launch into a CDP FDP process, which is the approval process in Fairfax County, and ideally start construction around 2023 on components within that area. That's obviously all dependent on approvals and there's a lot of time that could get lost in those processes, but that's the goal. So the goal would be this would open, what we'd really like to work with the city and the county on is actually figuring out how do we get, and Virginia Tech and Womata, is how do we get commons drive delivered from Mustang Alley to the metro in 2023? So when we open this project, that road is there and that essentially creates the parcels for the future development on the Womata and Virginia Tech parcel. That will take a lot of coordination between the agencies and the cities and potentially NVTA to figure out how to forward fund something like that. But it could be, it'd be amazing to open this and have it actually connect to the metro on day one. So that's our goal. We've got a lot of work to do in the next two years to get there.
Great, thank you.
Dave, do you think that's something that is feasible? You know, you're our guy to make that kind of stuff happen.
Yeah, sure. If it's a desire to make it happen, we'll certainly move it up on the priority list. So yeah, let's stay in touch with how to do that.
Tim?
Yeah, I saw a lot of elements from the Wharf in in this project, which is a good thing because I think that emphasis, the massing emphasizes as much the horizontal as opposed to the vertical, which I think is a nice contrast to Tyson's Corner. So that's, that's very good. The commons really seem to have a lot of flexibility in terms of programming and change. It's difficult to forecast the futures, so it seems like you've built in the ability to to change the programming to meet that need. Just wondering about the retail, whether you've had much focus on the flexibility on those spaces, given again, difficulty of forecasting the future and, you know, reprogramming needs, et cetera.
Yeah, so what we didn't share tonight is we actually have a merchandising plan and strategy that Regency has done for the site as well. That's obviously something we'll keep relatively secret for a period of time. But we do have, from a grocery perspective, we've been very focused on that tenant and have had, you know, serious, I mean, we're far along with one potential grocer and have a second one as well as a backup. And then we started talking to potential restaurant tenants as well, which will be some of the other anchors in that space. So we feel very good that the food component and grocer component is going to be solid and that that will drive the secondary leasing. If we can create the daytime population through this great commons park, having the hotel and the office there, and then the evening population with the residents, that should help us create a long enough daytime for retail. From a flexibility perspective, yeah, I'll get to that in a second. So the biggest thing we can do for flexibility on retail is to have the flat slabs so you're not, so you can have those retailers contract and expand over time so you can create, you know, whatever stores you need to be, depending on the need of the retail tenant. And then to have those spaces will be 18-foot floor to floor, so there'll be a lot of flexibility from a height perspective with what you do in those spaces as well. You know, if retail falls apart, you know, to some of those spaces over time, becomes something else maybe, so they could be their concrete construction. So they could be anything commercial, they could be cowork space, they could be retail space. But I think our, part of what Regency did here that was very purposeful was to limit the amount of retail to a bite-sized chunk that will be very successful. They didn't, they they specialize in grocery anchored shopping centers all around the country, which essentially is what this becomes. They didn't want to go, you know, 300,000, 400,000, second-story retail, all this stuff that starts getting complex where you end up with a second-story gym or movie theater that comes back to you and goes bankrupt and all of a sudden you have nothing to do with it. All of this space, if you look at that plan up there, is prime retail frontage, right, on the commons, which is perfect for leasing, and they feel really strongly about it. Second to that, as we've talked about the Virginia Tech Womata parcels, the thought is not to have a ton of retail on those parcels competing, to have some, maybe there's another 50,000, 60,000 retail, so that it feels like one space and not to have two anchors competing with each other. So that will help, I think, drive this success over time as well.
Thanks.
This is really exciting. I look forward to roasting marshmallows.
Not mushrooms.
And mushrooms, all of it. Why not? Sounds delicious. So no, I think this is a great, really exciting and dynamic vision for our city, so I'm really excited about it. And what I also really am excited about how you're using stormwater infrastructure in a creative and engaging way. So kudos to that, and I appreciate the the green roofs and the spill over there.
You may have given us some feedback in the last year about that.
You might have heard from me before and many others. In the voluntary, so I had a couple of questions about the voluntary concessions with respect to stormwater. One is, well, is the main one, in terms of green space, I think you say you aspire to 20% of concrete roof space. I've lost the text right in front of me. And the the stormwater aspiration was capturing 10% of stormwater above a 10-year storm. And we'll see, you know, a 10-year storm will be a one-year storm over the lifetime of this project. So I'm just wondering if we're on track to do that or ideally better. And then like my second question is if you have a lead ND checklist sort of strategy in terms of the credits that you're trying to pursue, if that's something that we could see.
Yeah, so we're happy to share the lead ND goal checklist that we are going for. And we also can bring, I think we're having a meeting next month that's more focused on trees and environment, so we could bring our sustainability consultant in for that. And then with the stormwater management, we again, heard loud and clear that that is a concern, one of the main concerns for all the citizens of Falls Church. And so we are working on a combined plan that is green roofs, planters, all of the bio retention in the commons, possible storage in vaults or other things underground to deal with anything that can't be dealt with above ground. I don't have a full answer yet, but that is something that will be clear in January. So when we see you in December, we'll have more. But we have quite extensive green roof planned. We're just again, working on the right balance between green roof and mechanical systems on the roof. But we, we take it all very seriously, so.
And Karen keeps us on task every day.
Yes.
Can't forget.
Yeah, at every meeting, whenever we come up with a creative idea, Antonette and Karen go, but how are we dealing with stormwater?
Yeah, exactly. So which is like four times, literally four times a week, so.
So I think we'll think you'll be happy once you see where we're headed.
But I think this is even more detailed answer than before because we already have kind of the buckets that we're working in. So every, every time we see you, we'll have more clarity. And we are working towards our aspirational goal.
Melissa?
Yeah, this was really exciting. I like the way you talked about the story of the architecture. I like the amount of articulation. I'm actually not a big fan of the Wharf architecture, so I was glad to see something totally different. To me, the Wharf looks like the Borg came and dropped cubes, ships down, and it doesn't really reflect the history of the Wharf, at least the Wharf I grew up as a child going to. So I really like to see the different articulation. I I am a little concerned, I mean, over time, we used to get, we were getting one office in phase one, and now we're getting both offices in phase two.
No, 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 no.
No. But there, Mark, there's both phase two up there right now, aren't they?
No, 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 no.
Oh, I, yeah, I think the confusion is, so phase one is going to have a seven, we're currently planning for a seven-story office. It could go up to being 10 stories, what, by the SE.
Oh, I see. So that phase two mark, because I was looking at that going, I thought you said it was, and then it looked like one of them was phase two now. Okay.
One of the offices is phase two.
I mean, the second one, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It was just because of the markers on your diagram.
Sorry.
I I just wanted to show a little bit of flexibility. We're currently planning for the seven stories.
Yeah, you talked about that. Okay. So that's basically, when you say the phase two marker is just for the upper, I mean...
No, no, so so let me explain this. So phase one is this first office building. Sorry, the pointer's not really working this time for some reason.
That's funny.
It's dying right at the wrong time.
Right there.
Okay, so that, that is being built.
The one on seven, right.
Perfect, that's being built with phase one, 100%.
So yeah, so yeah, and you flipped that, I remember, because at one point, one was, it was going to be not built on this side, and then you flipped on the other.
The flexibility we're asking for is this, between now and start of construction, if we get more tenant interest without having to go back through an approval process, we'd like at the SESP to have the approval to make that building taller.
Okay, that's fine. No, I would just go in and buy the markers on the diagram, which marked them both at phase two. I'm like, wait a minute, I thought they weren't.
We can show that differently for...
I I am a little bit concerned with the alleyways, especially alley one, which seems to me to be so narrow and so dark, at least in the diagrams. It reminds me of the back part of the mosaic where it's just like this dark, unfriendly, claustrophobic area.
Okay.
And maybe it's your drawings that are showing it that way, but alley three also seems that way, like it's just very tight.
You're talking about this.
So let us, let us do this. We'll, between now and our SESP submission, we'll have perspectives, we'll really show how that's going to look and feel.
And some precedent images.
Precedent images, yeah, we just haven't done that yet.
Right, and and that, that's why I wondered, like, it's just like, I know we have this great commons, but I don't want all the side streets to be narrow and dark and not, you know, I don't want to be like in diagonal alleyway and universal where it's all this little crowded place full of people. So, you know, so that that kind of concerned me when you look at it on there. The other thing, I'm cur, I was at Rexon Park meeting last Wednesday, I'm the planning commissioner rep for them. They are still very, very concerned about the fact that there's not that much green space, that a lot of the commons is hardscape, that within the project itself, it's mostly just building and road, and that there's just not, and they're, and they're also very concerned about recreationally, where these people will go, because the only place close is the high school side, and the high school side is pretty much booked all the time.[1749.61] all the time. So, I mean, I just want to put that out there, that they're just, they're very concerned that the Commons, while wonderful, it's got a lot of buildings, a lot of hardscape in it. And so like if you were, I mean, I guess that center part, is that actually grass or is that going to be artificial turf?
I don't know, we know yet.
Yeah, because, I mean, it's just stuff like that, that they're very, they're a little bit concerned about how much, the lack of green space. I'm also concerned about the lack of green space in general, because I think it makes it more attractive if there was more green space throughout the project than all one open area. And then my last question for you is, I was at the presentation for Rexon Park and Falls Church Arts and Historic Commission, and you had made a comment to one of their questions that you didn't really see a lot of history or a lot of cultural stuff in the city, and they said they were going to take you on a tour. Did they take you on the tour?
I think it's scheduled for December, right?
Okay. I wondered, because-
Been helping us.
We'll be finalized tomorrow, December 3rd or 4th.
December 3rd or 4th.
Yeah, because your presentation still lacks an understanding of who Falls Church is.
Okay.
I mean, I just don't, there's a lot of things on this tour you're going to see, and hopefully they're going to teach you about Tanner Hill and the history there. They're going to teach you about Cherry Hill Farmhouse and the Victorian Society in our Civil War days. Like, we do a lot of stuff, cultural stuff. They're going to teach you about the Falls Church, which is the church that our city is named after, that has both revolutionary and Civil War history and other things. There's a lot of stuff here.
I think maybe our comment might have been misconstrued. So we did, we hired tracers to do research on this specific site-
Right, okay.
And the history of this site. And so we have that history of this site, and we understand it, and we're actually working with the schools to even understand the history of the school as well. And we will 100% incorporate in the placemaking story, the history of not just great institutions within the city of Falls Church, but also that location. So I think maybe what we were hoping to find, right, was that this site had been, other than just a farm, which is essentially what it was, that there had been some other story that was of interest at this specific site, and it wasn't, which is a shame. But we had a great follow-up with the historic folks, and we're going to do that tour, and we will incorporate all that into this. So we are, trust me, that is what we do for a living, the placemaking is something we really care about.
Well, I, okay, and I understand that, but I'm just saying your presentation doesn't reflect that at all at this, right?
Yeah, not yet, because we haven't done that work yet.
Okay, and that's fine, and I, I'm just following up on the comment, because I was asked to by the historic commission.
Appreciate it. Yeah, and on the Parks and Rec side, what I'll say is, I mean, this is the same plan that was approved at the SEE, so the open space hasn't changed. And obviously, the struggle we have here is, we're trying to hit an economical for the city to pay for the school, which requires a certain amount of density, which limits how much open space you can have. And that's why we tried to create this great open space that can be flexible evenings and weekends to almost two acres, which is a really substantial space. What you're not seeing is the extension of that going off into the county as well. So when that space becomes an additional 300 to 400 feet long, you know, it becomes much larger, I mean, even for much bigger events.
I think what they're talking about is more recreational space, which this really isn't.
Right, I understand that. And that's hard to accommodate on a site that's 10 acres, you know, to accommodate ball fields as well, or, you know, larger parks.
Well, not even just ball fields. I think their feeling is that the closest actual park is West End, which is substantially far away.
Agreed.
And the school site can't be used as a park.
Right.
Because it has functions on all the fields most of the time, so.
It is a huge amenity, though, to have, you know, tennis courts and track that people can run around. And, I mean, there'll be points of the day, obviously, where it is restricted and the school kids are using it and on evenings and weekends as well. But there's also time where there's not. And there are basketball leagues, and there's other leagues, volleyball leagues. So to the extent we have residents living in our building that are part of those leagues, will have the ability to go next door and recreate. We will have recreation within our residential buildings as well. So, I know, it is a struggle, I totally get it.
I think they feel like they-
Could have hit that with this project, unfortunately.
I think the Rexon Park Board feels like you assume that this will all happen without any coordination, and they feel like they need to be talked to a little bit about how this is going to be managed, how, these are a lot of, because they're managing all those different programs. So that was the only thing I would say.
Great. Anything else? Please.
Thanks, yes, very exciting. Congratulations on the extension to the metro parcel. This is our only chance for a real transit-oriented development, and I think this, the density goes a really long way to doing that. I like the retail, the rental building, the new design, it's really cool. And I would, echoing comments, to make sure the placemaking stuff is timelit, more timeliness.
Okay.
You guys know how to do this, but it does feel like there's a lot of, a lot of familiar amenities in there, the swings, the chess, you know, things like that. I really didn't get a good sense of the circulation, too. I mean, there's not a lot of cars in these images. There's going to be a lot of cars, so how all that kind of comes together, I know it happens later in the process.
Yep.
Be great to see that.
Yeah, also, like, we're Uber, how Uber operate, how other things will operate, transportation-wise.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, let's move on up to council, and this is just the first cut at this, and we do have a lot more tonight, but Mr. Z.
Well, thank you, Mayor. It's easy to see that you've spent your time productively with your team and coming across with what could be very sort of cartoons, especially the big units and black and white buildings. But I think you came to impress, and you've done that. We're all uniformly impressed, and clearly also, the time that you spent prowling through the back alleys of Milan, Prague, and Paris haven't been lost. So your emphasis on doing a modern uptake on what you call warehousing, modern warehousing, that may not be the right marketing term to use, but I thank you for your candor. I personally do like that design partie, and especially the perforated screen that you used, some of what you call the millennial apartments. But I think that shows a kind of thoughtfulness that you don't find everywhere, and I hope you don't lose that, because it's very easy to lose that, as well as richness in your detailing as you go along. I mean, for now, you've got the playfulness of your bronze pigs, but we all know that's the first thing that gets wiped off the table, just because you can't afford it.
Right.
So please, don't lose the richness and the playfulness. The front gate, for example, the front door is of particular interest to me. You know, we've mentioned it before, I'm glad that you've expressed that ethic. I would like to see something really cool there that, you know, if you're driving by ourselves, and obviously you more than anybody else, they'd say, okay, this is where we need to stop, this is the place we've heard about, this is where we know that's the front door to this place. And the kinds of things you have above the second story, the way you define the sky with, you know, Alley One in particular, where you have the cables trailing across in the second story, that's Bethesda Row, I mean, we know that. So if you can capture more of that richness, and in particular, I know these are very early, your office building, if you get to be able to put an additional two stories on top, I would think that you'd want to extend your partie, that is to say, the second story, they may want some balcony, a way to get outside and look out, so not just this monolithic kind of thing.
So I will say that, and we didn't go over the plans, but we can talk about this more in next month's meeting, the office does have a large conference space inside and then a big roof deck outside, so already planned as-
I knew you'd have an answer for me.
Yeah.
So I know you're thinking about all this stuff, and of course, we know the hotel is new, so, you know, forgive me for saying this, but it doesn't meet the standard of the rest of the buildings that have obviously had more thought, so we'll give you that. And your truthfulness in expressing all these fan call units, I'm sure others of us on the council will have more to say about that. I would like to see some touch of Frank Gehry in here, some way of hardwiring that playfulness, maybe your studio space could have some of that swoopy, metal, shiny Mickey Mouse kind of thing, I don't know, you know, doing a way that doesn't upset too many people, that want you to put up colonial bricks. I'm sure you'll figure something out that looks good. And that's kind of it. I think it's coming along very nicely, and apply your persistence in trying to ensure that you understand our desire to have a very rich environment.
Mr. Duncan.
Okay, I'll start by saying exciting with a capital E, so everything else I say doesn't sound too Eeyore-ish. But I want to follow up on what Mr. Puente said about some of the other elements that are not shown. I know we're just in our infancy here, but at some point in the not-too-distant future, show me what this looks like with, you know, the Grubhub delivery guy, the implausibly large semi that is emptying, you know, one flat of sodas into the restaurant, the, you know, the transit, the scooter people, show me where the scooter people are. You know, where does the, where are the pedestrians, you know, jaywalk? I mean, show me the chaos that is, you know, increasingly life in Falls Church, which has got some good elements, many good elements, more good elements than bad, but there are some elements that, since we're planning from scratch, let's, you know, just factor that in. You know, where are those ancillary activities of modern life going to go in, on your, you know, beautiful palette? And dogs, where are the dogs going to go? You're going to have, I mean, your own data says you're going to have 250 dogs, so they've got to go somewhere. And, you know, you've got a lot of land to work with, so do please show us where that might be. How it presents itself, this is a little bit like what Mr. Z said about the front door, how it presents itself to the federal realty property across Haycock, and the buyer property diagonally across is something I'd like to see a little bit more of as we, you know, go down the line. The historic element, finally, you know, yeah, it's definitely worth prowling around town and seeing some of the cool old things we have. I'm not quite sure what that's going to translate into in your development, you know? I mean, there were some elements of the old Falls Church that weren't so great either, you know, massage parlors and pawn shops and, you know, so forth. So one building that was lost, that I do hear lamented, is the old bank that was at the corner of Seven and 29. You know, it had an iconic look to it, and I don't know if there's some element of that, there are photographs of it, there are some element of that that you can include somewhere. It would be, you know, a warming element to folks who, you know, remember that far back, or at least have heard stories about that. So I think that's all I've got for now.
All right, Vice Mayor Connelly.
Thank you for this. There's a lot that I really like about this, and one of them is that if you were listening to the earlier part of our meeting, we're out in the hallway, we spend a lot of time talking about these S's, stormwater, sewer, sidewalks, scooters, and this is a chance to actually get it right from the beginning, as opposed to now, how we're trying to retrofit it all. So I'm very excited about that, that we can do this right from the beginning on this 10-acre site. I like that it's really permeable, that there's so many ways in and out of the site, and I have to say, as someone who for many years dropped my kids off at Georgia Basin, Maryland Henderson, I can see, like, if I don't want to go in the school, there are many other ways that I can drop off and pick up my kids within this development. So I think that's a good thing, that people will be able to cut through and do different things, and not all be going in the same direction at the same time. As far as the history goes, as you're talking about the big windows, factory-style windows, we didn't really have factories in Falls Church, but we do have one place where we do have windows like that, and that is in the old George Mason Gym, which is about the only part of George Mason High School that we might, that has any architectural, I don't want to insult George Mason High School, but anything that stands the test of time. So that, and it's got, it's got an interesting shape, but it has tall windows, so I don't know if you've seen that, but that might be something that you could take some inspiration from. And then the other thing on the history is just that, as you're naming some of these things, one of the things that are, and I think there's only one George Mason alumni in the building, Tom Clinton, is there anyone else? Oh, Josh Shakur, too. So back in the day, they used to call that area the Gulch, so it might be fun if one of those alleys was Gulch Alley.
That's funny. You know, that's a big mixed-use project in Nashville, too, the Gulch.
There you go.
It's an old rail yard, that's pretty cool, yeah.
Yeah, that would definitely resonate with people who were here, have been here for a long time.
Why did they call it the Gulch? Do we announce?
Tom Clinton, why'd they call it the Gulch?
Because we're a swamp. I mean, from your site all the way to Seven Corners, you can see, you know, the whole town is a bowl, it's a gulch.
Better than Frog Holler.
There you go.
That's cool, thank you, that's really helpful.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Snyder, anything?
Sure, just three quick comments. I would like to see the BRT station on future diagrams to serve Route 7 and also up to West Falls Church. The second thing is, and I think it's been raised before, that the movement of vehicles and people in the Commons area, how many vehicles are we expecting? Because we're going to be drawing a fair number of vehicles up to West Falls Church, so how are we going to get that to actually work, so that it serves the vehicles, but more importantly, creates the kind of environment you want? Finally, what is there about this that's going to attract people to this site for entertainment and retail? I see that it serves the people that are already there, but if we want this to be a regional draw, people to come there, do we have the right elements? And I would just ask if you could give that some consideration. Finally, from an architectural standpoint, of all the developments lately that I've seen, I think Pike and Rose is the best. So to the extent that you work in that sort of variety of facades and architecture, which I think is what you're doing, it's very exciting. So those are just a couple thoughts.
So, yeah.
Great, thank you. So I will echo the comments about, well done, it's exciting to see the progress. I think architecture is a pretty subjective thing, but I do like your more modern take. Is the white building the microunit building? Okay. You mentioned partner announcements, when can we expect those?
Probably senior, sooner than the hotel, I would say, in the new year.
Yeah, exactly. And then grocery next spring. So as soon as we have, some of them are under non-disclosure agreements, as soon as we have the ability to get out and announce it, we will be talking to you immediately and announcing them.
Great.
Because we wanted that out there as well.
We'll all be in high anticipation. Phase Two, so I think one person asked about the open space for B3, which I think you mentioned was parking and staging. What about D3? What are your thoughts on how to use that in the interim?
It'll definitely be used as construction staging while we're building the project, because we'll need that space. We haven't quite figured out, quite frankly, what that will be.
Yeah, I think we're looking to keep it as a kind of community amenity, sounds a strong word, but maybe it's just, you know, basically a flat space that can be used for various things. I don't want to step on the farmer's market, but tiny farmer's market or other uses.
And we'll think through that as part of the SESP, what it will look like in the interim. Ideally, we're starting construction on that building almost immediately after finishing Phase One, so ideally-
Not too long of interim use.
Right.
So I'm glad you've prioritized the grade and the Commons and the earlier comments and that. I think I need to spend probably a little more time feeling better about the elevated staircase and the walkway, so maybe more images and kind of feel how that would go. Because I think anytime you see a set of stairs, it's just less inviting than if we're flat. And I understand why you've done what you've done, but maybe more images, just more time to kind of think it over.
I guess also just say we're working on a placemaking piece, both for the facade of the garage and that space that, again, we hope will make it feel inviting, like, I really want to go up those stairs to see what's happening beyond them.
Yep. Yeah, and clearly you guys have spent a lot of time on the exterior views of the Commons. I think Mr. Duncan made this comment, I'd like to see more time also on the Route 7 and Haycock facades, because those will face, that will be the face towards the rest of the city, and especially as we think about connections to other developments. I think a good lesson learned from Mosaic is it's a very internally-facing project, and I think that's something I don't want to repeat here. And to add to all the rows that people were fans of, I think we talked about Bethesda and Santana and then Pike and Rose, I'm going to add Assembly Row on your radar if you haven't seen that one. That's outside of Boston that I visited this past summer. One thing they did really well, besides all the different building articulations and mix of styles, is they actually have a bunch of 3D art on their buildings. So instead of just standalone sculptures or things, which are also great, I think it's just really being creative about how the building facades look and actually doing art up and down the buildings, and a lot of visual interest that way. And then my last comment is around, something to think about in VCs if we don't have that in there already. So clearly you're showing a lot of vibrancy, and that takes work to keep it going. I'd like to see some sort of official commitment, you all, on what sort of that programming, or, you know, how are you guys going to manage this? It's probably something you're going to do anyway, but I think as a city, we're equally invested in wanting to make sure this place stays vibrant and fun. So I'd like to see some sort of commitment in the VCs for that.
So I think we're obviously very interested in keeping it vibrant, fun, continually interesting. I think that goes back to some of the Park and Rec comments also, that we want to continue working with existing groups, events in the city, to try to make sure that we are integrating them into the placemaking, and it's not just us coming in and doing new things. So I think that there's, that's one of the conversations we had at that last meeting that we look forward to continuing.
Great, I think, definitely think we're very aligned in wanting this to be great, and I think I just want to see it in the VCs to make it official. But overall, thank you, I look forward to the next version of this.
Senator Lichtenhouse?
Yep, no, a lot of great comments. Certainly much of this is commendable. So can you guys walk me through, maybe this is just a broader question, kind of walk me through what the vibe is at night on a weekend? I mean, you guys have talked about very early on, this is like an 18/7, right, maybe a 24/7. How late do the places stay open? Kids have gone home, you got bands out there, you got a barbecue competition, whatever it is, what is that, like, what does that feel like? What do you guys envision?
Well, first, I just wrote down barbecue competition, because that's actually a great idea.
[laughing]
It's totally Virginia, and like, spot on.
I do like the bronze pigs, that's a good.
We already have pigs, we're good.
I know, well, but that's celebrating history. Okay, so, so I think that goes kind of hand-in-hand with what-
Okay, so I think that goes kind of hand-in-hand with what Councilmember Hardy was just asking as well, like, thinking, we are now in the stage where we're thinking through all of that. So what are the different types of events? How would we manage the space? But on a Saturday evening, the goal here is, I don't know how many of you have been to Disney World with your kids, but, you know, three times a week, you're like, where's he going with this?
Where is this going?
Three days a week, Tinker Bell flies out of the castle with hundreds of thousands of people watching, and there's fireworks, and like, it's the most special thing in the world.
We're not doing that.
And we're not doing that, but my point to you is...
We need a lot more lights.
No, no, my point to you is this, what we need to do to make this fresh is that the biggest thing will be surprise, right? So I want you to come on a Saturday night and have it be different every Saturday night you come. So one Saturday night, it might be a rock concert outside, one Saturday night it might be robotics competition, one Saturday night it might be Battle of the Bands, one Saturday night it might just be, you know, movie night. One Saturday night it might be the high school's having a huge event, and we're, the restaurants essentially providing the dinner activity for their prom or for the, whatever, for the football game or whatever, maybe. It needs to be variety, so that people keep coming back. If it is the same thing, it gets a little stale. Great. As far as how late, there will be restaurants smattered throughout that whole space from Seven to Haycock, so the goal is to have people out and about in that entire central core. You know, whether those restaurants on a Saturday close at midnight, one, two, who knows, I don't think we know that yet, that's a good question.
Sorry, can I just add one more thing to that? I think, back to what Councilwoman Hardy's point was also in the Parks and Rec thing, I think we're looking at three components: our own placemaking events, things that are going on in Falls Church, or new things that are created, and then also making sure that our retail mix is robust enough that, although we'll have a lot of great events, that we don't have to have an event every weekend, that you want to come because there are a lot of great restaurants, or interesting drinks, or whatever. So I think if you look at kind of a Pike and Rose vibe, or even Wharf vibe on the weekend, I mean, the Wharf is sometimes difficult to go to on the weekend because it's so crowded. I don't think that's necessarily what we're going for, but definitely to feel, you know, 10 o'clock on a summer night, you want to feel like there's people outside. And I guess going back to the commons discussion we had also in terms of flattening that, to make sure that the restaurants and bars and spaces can kind of spill into that space to extend the commons.
So, yeah, so I'm glad you guys mentioned that, because that's a primary concern that I have. And I know that we're early stages here, but you mentioned variety, you mentioned different. And in my mind, what's important about this project is staying power. And not staying power in terms of timelessness, which is certainly important from an aesthetic perspective, but staying power in terms of keeping people here. And one of the things that I do like about the common area and the stretch that you guys have put together is that it is commendable, in my opinion, how much green space you have fit in between in a project of this size. I think you've got some great ideas and precedent images that would keep people in that common space. But I think about, from my perspective, what's staying power for me in a development like this, which is, even when you're sitting in that common space, and you're looking out at the buildings themselves, you've got variety in architecture and design. And one of the great things about Santana Row and that common area is that you've got this blend of, I think Mr. Z had mentioned Prague and places like that, they've got this, like, this variety in design, that if you're sitting in the middle of the common area, and let's say you're not playing man-sized chess, and you're not, you know, building robots or whatever it is, that you're looking out and, like, the design itself catches your eye. And you could find yourself sitting there with a drink in hand for 30 minutes, just kind of looking at the different design components. And I, exactly. And so I think that that's really important. And again, I know you'll get comments from boards and commissions, Architectural Advisory Review Board will be all over this, but that's staying power in terms of keeping people's visuals, both inside the common area and strolling around, because that's a big component of the design in that common area. You guys have repositioned that sidewalk to make it walkable, so you kind of meander through that common area. And as much as people are going to be watching their kids playing inside of that, a lot of folks want to spend an hour meandering through the common area. And so everything from the design components, to the hardscape, to the materials themselves, to the finstration on the facades, is going to be incredibly important. And one thing that I would like to see come out of this is to really kind of stretch the imagination and level creativity in the way that you break up the design. And I know it's impossible to try to recreate hundreds of years of architectural evolution in strolling through the streets of Prague and Milan, but generally speaking, if we have the ability to do that, this is the opportunity, because that staying power is going to be important, because you're talking about 40 years of development taking place over this 40-acre site, and in Falls Church, wanting this to be a draw. And I'm actually okay with it being very crowded and people staying there for hours on end, because it means they're spending money, they like coming to Falls Church, and then they get on Metro and they leave on any, you know, on any bike or scooter. So I would challenge you guys to create that, because that variability and variety in design and staying power to keep people interested in the project itself is going to be important. Again, I understand that you've got to create something that looks a little more CBD for the office component, and I did like some of the precedent images for the condo, but really stretch that along that main corridor for retail, because what I don't like seeing, and I saw this in a couple areas, was, you know, these, were these glass boxes of retail that you kind of walk by. And I understand that that's probably just one component.
Actually not. And one of the things you'll see in our SESP submission, and again, as much as maybe some people have not enjoyed the Wharf, one of the pieces that I think is really successful is kind of, no, it's totally fine. I think some other people mentioned kind of what the pedestrian experience is like, right? What's the first 20 feet? And we talk about that a lot at the Wharf, and we're planning to do the same thing. So the glass is just, that's just a placeholder right now. We're going to be showing you examples of what we're going to use as storefront guidelines, but the plan is to have each of the retailers really create their own storefront, and not just everybody goes behind a glass curtain wall. We just are still developing that, so we're trying to work through the bigger-picture architecture. So I think at the street level, we definitely understand your concern, and then above that, so if you're sitting and looking up, we're going to continue to work through detailing, keeping things interesting, through art, through architectural detailing, all of that. And like, for example, with the condos, just showing, you know, the triple-layered windows as a detail, that's just not something you see every day. So I think we totally appreciate what you're saying and are working to.
Yeah, and I like the fact that the precedent that you guys have used, I mean, Santana Row, Assembly Row, you've talked Pike and Rose, I mean, you've talked some of the other developments. I mean, those are, those are great to draw from, but I really want this to be unique. And so as much as we can push the variability on the architectural design, especially at street level, to keep people engaged and focused, and, you know, again, spending time sitting there just looking at the design components are going to keep people here, which I think is very, very important. But otherwise, very pleased. One last request, would love to see in terms of your retail plan, love to get a roll bar in this city. I've said it many times, even if you had, instead of a pig for people to sit on, they could have this, like, bronze oyster shell that they sit in and kids play on outside of the roll bar. That would just be a personal request, but again, supply demand, if they want to come, that's great. If not, I understand. I have my feelings hurt. But otherwise, thank you guys for the presentation and for everybody's comments, appreciate it.
All right, I've got a few comments. I'll try to keep this quick. We do have actually a fair amount of hearing left to go. One, I do like the architecture. What I've seen is quite good. Murphy, my hat's off to you, I think it's been quite good. With respect to the garage, we just got a kind of a glimmer of it as we kind of drove past it. I would just ask that you stay away from precast concrete if you can for a kind of final finish. I love the idea of a green wall, for example, as well, something, a living wall, or whatever you might want to call it. The role of Mustang Way, I'm probably a little confused as to where it ended up in the last go. I mean, it looks to me like it may end up being kind of a fairly big feeder road, because it's basically the only east-west road on site, right? Is that how it was envisioned, or how it's envisioned now as far as kind of loading east-west?
Yeah, so, shoot, is this not showing up?
Just talk them off, follow the mouse?
Yeah, perfect, thank you so much, Cindy.
Do you want to go to the larger?
Yeah, so, that's okay. So Mustang Alley is shown here the way it had been envisioned. The only difference is that it will have a full movement traffic light instead of a hawk signal now, and it will likely have a kind of a dedicated right turn lane, or, sorry, dedicated left turn lane, so that you'll start seeing that in the SESP. And that is a major road. But almost all of our, 80% to 85% of our parking is underneath buildings A2 or D2, so all of that parking can flow out onto Haycock, Street A, Route Seven, or Mustang Alley through that garage network. So it gives the parkers, who are creating a lot of the traffic to and from the project, maximum flexibility to get out in all four directions, which is very similar to what we had before. The only difference is they'd go through the garage instead of going up that hill that we had created. And then Mustang Alley will also be a good portion of the circulation as well. So we think the intersections coming out at Haycock on the middle of the block, which will have a traffic light, and the intersection up at Mustang Alley will be about equal auto flow between the two of them.
And that the commons will also continue again to the metro?
Right.
So one block to Page North?
Right, it's Falls Church Drive.
You're going to have Falls Church Drive as another major east-west, probably even the most major east-west in the whole network.
Right, and that already has a traffic light, or you just continue straight all the way to Haycock again.
So, I mean, I know Mustang Alley in the past was kind of an abbreviated version of a road. I mean, I don't think it got full streetscape on both sides, if that was my recollection.
It gets, so it has streetscape on our south side. There's that space that the city still owns. It's about 20...
20 feet, there's a five-foot landscape strip and a 12-foot shared-use path.
Oh, yeah, there's a five, right, there's a shared-use path, there's a landscape strip on the northern side for pedestrians and bikes. Then you will have the 20-foot sidewalk setback for the Virginia Tech development when that happens. So the northern side of Mustang Alley will actually be a nice kind of 40-foot buffer of pedestrian and bike movement and landscape on that road.
And have you guys coordinated with them in terms of the actual streetscape? It's going to essentially match up and have a full nine yards of what was anticipated to be? Okay. I mean, getting a little ahead of myself, I do have some concerns. I mean, originally, I understand how grade plays into this and how that sort of changed things. I feel like there is less porosity from kind of an east-west perspective than there was earlier, and I think it probably bears at least some more consideration or thought about it, and how it works, and how the stoplights, the movements work, and the stacking works. I do feel as well that Haycock Road is a little bit like the mosaic, in that it's great once you're inside, but as you approach, it's kind of a big wall, it's like a fortress, there's no entrances, there's no outdoor seating, you know, it's kind of like, once you're in the admission gate, you're fine, but on the outside, there's not much. And I don't want to have that happen here in Haycock, particularly since we want to enliven our neighbor, Federal Realty, at some point, to kind of tie in, you guys work across the street with each other. And so I would suggest maybe to consider either some kind of entrances, pass-through, something to just kind of create some more porosity on the Haycock roadside, and also even just some more life in terms of maybe outdoor seating?
Right.
Or some outdoor activity, or entrances to the grocery store, or whatever it might be, to just kind of have that flow, because I think at some point, Federal Realty and you all will probably be talking an awful lot to each other.
We have been, by the way.
No, I didn't mean it, like, I mean, kind of, not in a literal sense, but the projects will be talking to each other when they rebuild.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I hope that they have entrances and back and forth, so that people don't feel like they have to kind of go through the chute to get into the project. And so I'm glad you guys are talking, I think that's great. Are they okay with that entrance? I know they probably would like to line up their own access to their project on the same axis as yours, right?
Yes, we've had two recent meetings with them, talking about kind of their thoughts of what they're thinking in the future, as well as what we're doing here, so they're fully aware. And they seemed very excited about where we're headed on this, thought it works well with what they're ultimately going to do. But, you know, they'll be involved in the West End master plan exercise you guys are going through, the, sorry, Falls Church, West Falls Church master plans, so they can kind of represent their thoughts at the table when they're there. But we've had some really positive meetings with them there.
And so Mustang Alley, does that line up with anything on their side?
No, Mustang Alley is north of their site.
So it's the condos or whatever that building is?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. With respect also, just sticking on the idea of roads, the Commons, Little Commons Drive or Way, or whatever it's called, so is that really like kind of set in stone now? Are you guys still working with your neighbors for final engineering? Is it conceptually within five or 10 feet, or are you guys dead-on, like, this is exactly where it's going to be, they're on board with exactly where you guys want to put it?
So we've completely coordinated with the folks in the north, the Virginia Tech folks, on that location, they feel very good about it, it works with what they're planning. You know, we still have to go through Virginia VDOT approval of the intersection at Route Seven and Commons, so that could shift things here and there a little bit, but our hope is that it will stay where it is.
Okay.
And we're, we'll coordinate with WIDE on all of that over the next few months.
Okay. Yeah, we certainly want to encourage that and assist with that, and the cooperation between our neighbors and the like. All right, let me give a few other quick thoughts. Let's see. So, the hotel architecture, I would say the same thing, and I presume you're not looking at EFS or precast concrete, or whatever, looks like kind of like a motel on the side of the highway at present, and I'm sure that's not where you're going to end up, but I just would echo that thought as well. Let's see what else I've got. I think overall, it's quite good. I mean, it's a great start to where we are. I do think some issues with just Haycock Road, again, and the sort of porosity, getting people through there in a way, not having a wall. And I think sort of mostly the east-west travel throughout the whole site, I think is something that maybe could use a few more thoughts or a few more bit of consideration. But overall, I think you've done a really nice job out of the box here, so thank you. Unless there's any other comments that need to be made.
Mr. Mayor, just one quick one. Hopefully, in this process, both the city and you can stay live to some really unique opportunities that may come by. For example, does a museum have a new home? A science museum, a professional sports, you know, thing, off-season thing, like the, what do they have in Boston, the Capitals have their, you know, hopefully can stay live to something that isn't particularly on here right now, but can really continue to reach out for something that's really, really unique?
Okay.
That would bring people in. It's just a request and would involve both you and the city.
Okay.
Okay, unless there's anything else, this has been a great first step, we really appreciate it, and look forward to working some more with you all. Thank you to our friends on the boards and commissions for coming out and sticking with us. Why don't we take a short break, and then we'll reconvene our hearing. Got lots to do tonight. Thank you all for coming out.
[inaudible]
No, we're good.
All right, will you call the next item, then?
Yes, we actually have two items related to scooters, and so I'll just call those at the same time. We have TO 19-10, Ordinance to amend Chapter 26 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 4, Bicycles of the Code of the City of Falls Church to prohibit motorized skateboards and scooters and electric power-assisted bicycles on most sidewalks. And then the second item is TR 19-33, Resolution to authorize the City of Falls Church Shared Use Mobility Devices Demonstration Project.
All right, we have staff report?
We do, and Carrie Odenino is there at the podium. And as we get started, if I just could thank Carrie, you'll notice that many of the items coming up are all Carrie's items, the grant applications, in concert with EPW, but Carrie's been the lead on each of them, as well as the Ring Road. So Carrie had a lot of work for this packet. But we'll get started with the scooters, and we've got the changes that we'll summarize since the council last saw this.
All right, thank you very much. And if you could keep your staff report as tight as you can, it's getting late this evening.
Sure. I did want to note, Caitlin Sobsey did do the Park Avenue Great Streets application, so.
But you had a lot to do with it as well.
I did assist with it. All right. So, hi, I'm Carrie Odenino. Thank you, Mayor Tarter, and members of City Council for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm working on the shared, the city's Shared Mobility Devices Pilot Program, and the lead staff member on the program. And changes that have been made to the proposed program since the October 28th meeting are highlighted in gray in the staff report. So again, for the request, if a locality does not implement an ordinance or pilot program by January 1st, 2020, shared mobility device companies can operate and that locality is authorized by legislation passed by the General Assembly earlier this year. And staff is requesting that council authorize a one-year demonstration project or pilot program to allow private companies to offer shared scooters and similar devices within the public right-of-way. And staff is seeking approval of the memorandum of agreement, program document, and permit application documents associated with this demonstration project. So this report provides the draft pilot program. City staff has prepared that will enable the city to evaluate and tailor its policies on e-scooters and other shared mobility devices. In terms of updates since the October 28th regular meeting, for the proposed pilot program, in terms of locations where devices are permitted to operate, staff has amended the proposed pilot, such that motorized scooter and skateboard users in the City of Falls Church be prohibited from riding on the sidewalk, except for Route 29 and Route 7. In terms of parking locations for devices, shared use mobility devices must be parked in a manner that doesn't impede pedestrian traffic or other uses, as noted in the MOA. Staff is recommending that devices not be limited to parking in designated areas, and may park in other areas as appropriate. and may park in other areas as appropriate. In terms of speed, staff is recommending a max speed of 20 miles per hour on a motorized bicycle or bicycle, 15 miles per hour on a motorized scooter or skateboard in-street, and 6 miles per hour on the sidewalk. In terms of safety features, staff is recommending that a speedometer be required on each device. For minimum age, staff is recommending 16 years old is the minimum. The many apps have a minimum age of 18 years old. In terms of users per device, tandem riding on devices as prohibited, and a limit of one rider at a time per device. In terms of number of companies in the pilot, staff is recommending a limit of three operators per device type, with initial deployment of 25 devices and a maximum of 50 devices per company per device type. With regard to fees, city staff is recommending a $3,500 upfront permit fee and a right-of-way use fee of 5 cents per trip. So, in terms of applying for a permit to the demonstration project, the process will include a memorandum of agreement, a business license, and applicable business taxes, a permit application, and a permit fee to offset the city's oversight costs. And in the event that four or more applications are received, per device type, a committee will meet to discuss applications and conduct an evaluation of each, using criteria including a full and complete application package, demonstrated ability to field and respond to service requests, options provided for text unlock, access to devices through cash, discounted pricing divided, provided to individuals who demonstrate eligibility or participation in any local, state, or federally-run assistance program, number and effectiveness of safety programs and communications approaches, number and effectiveness of approaches to parking management, ability to ride devices a minimum of half-mile beyond the city boundary line into neighboring localities. And in terms of the liability of device users, city staff has added language to the program document, requiring that companies advise riders that they are responsible in the event of injury, death, or property damage, and should investigate whether or not they have insurance. So, in terms of timing, the program will receive operator applications starting in December. And again, companies have reported that they would begin deploying devices in the spring. And all the documents are attached.
All right. Thank you very much. So, Mr. Shields, do you have anything to add?
Not at this time. Thanks.
So, procedurally, what are we approving in this sort of group? I know the city attorney would like to address that, but just so the public is aware.
Well, there are two items before you right now, and one of them would approve the program. And that has, it has the three documents. It has the program description document, the memorandum of agreement, which would be entered into with scooter companies, the operators that were applied to work within the city. And it also has an application form document. And within those documents are all the rules and regulations about how the plan would work. There's a second item before you, which is the ordinance amendment. And that item, you would need to act on that separately. You would be, it's recommended for first reading. And what the ordinance would do would be to prohibit scooters from being on the sidewalk, except along Route 7 and 29. In addition, there's a number of general safety requirements, which have been in the ordinance for bicycles. And for those general provisions, we have added the electric power-assisted bicycles and motorized skateboards and scooters to the ones that, where it would be applicable for just a general safety requirement. Since we were going into the ordinance, it just seemed that we were adding the definition of those types of, of vehicles, and therefore, we should plug them in where it's just general safety requirements, like riding with the traffic flow, interference with control, and things like that. So, that, those have been added. That's why there's a little bit more. But, the main change about the prohibition on riding is on sidewalks is, appears, sorry. Where is it now? Oh, it's in Section 26, 110B, line 226 of the report. So, there's two things you can do. You would, there's one motion, which is adopting the resolution that approves the program, and a separate one would be the first reading for the ordinance.
All right. So, let's move on to questions or comments. Anyone have any? Vice Mayor?
There's been a considerable amount of citizen concern about banning scooters from sidewalks. And I think Ms. Comont made a really good point tonight, that we are assuming that we're protecting the walkers on the sidewalks by saying no scooters, but we're not protecting the scooter riders, who are also our neighbors, by saying they must ride always in the street, except on Route 7 and Route 29. And someone mentioned Annandale Road and Hillwood Road, and those are pretty dangerous roads where we are, would be saying scooters have to go. So, I'm not sure, I would not support this banning of scooters on all sidewalks.
If you could propose an alternative that, you know, that, but if, but if you give, if you grant first reading to this ordinance, we could narrow it down by the time of adoption if we want to have consideration about more streets where people should be allowed to ride on sidewalks. I mean, if you have a change that you want to propose now, we could certainly put that change in there today. But, in addition, given that you will have advertised the broader restriction, we could, you could adopt a newer one, or, I'm sorry, a narrower one, when this comes before you for second reading. And we could work in the meantime, and staff could work on narrowing which roads, we're narrowing the number of roads on which riding on sidewalks is prohibited.
Or widening the number of roads that...
On which riding on sidewalks is permitted, yes.
Okay.
Either, either way, we can, we can make those adjustments if this ordinance is advertised.
Okay. And Ms. Hardy had spoken earlier with me about an idea that she had, so I'm going to...
Sure.
So, before I talk about that, I had a question first. Thank you, Ms. Odenino, for continuing to work on this very thorough staff report again. I think in the past, we've talked about fines for people who incorrectly park. Is that something that we need to specify right now? Because I looked through, and it said that we have the ability to work with operators on that. But, do we need to specify the amount of the fine, or how that would work now?
So, some operators are doing it, and some aren't. And my understanding is that they're, they're testing it really more in other markets. They aren't, they aren't doing it for parking. In this region, is my understanding, because it's, it's hard. Often, if they get a report of a device that's parked incorrectly, it's moved by the time they arrive. I mean, they, they also don't all require that photo at the end of the ride. Some of them do, and some of them don't. So, it's, it's hard for them to assess the fines.
Can the city levy a fine? Like, could they get a ticket written by a police officer if they happen to see one parked incorrectly, and an officer saw the person do it? Do we have the power for that?
I believe that we do.
So, I'd like to do that if possible. Mostly, I think it's a deterrent, and I think in all practical purposes, the chance of someone actually seeing it is probably low, but I think it's a good deterrent out there, that if you incorrectly park, you could be fined 50 bucks. So, I think I want to make sure we put something like that in place, because I do think it'll prevent a problem that we know exists elsewhere. So, on the sidewalk riding, I think as it stands, I would not support a blanket ban of sidewalk riding. I think requiring people to ride where they don't feel safe, like those arterial roads, we talked about Annandale, Hillwood, Great Falls, Lincoln, where the speed limit is the same as 27, 29 and 7, it just would discourage this mode of transportation. And so, when we talk about promoting all modes of transportation, I think this pilot really is a test of viability of scooters. I think preventing people from riding where they feel safe would really just make this mode of transportation a nonstarter. It would make the point of this pilot pointless. So, I think there are a couple of compromises we could consider. And I think the other, I think one of the letters we got was that the practical reality is, is that scooters are going to cross borders from Arlington and Fairfax. And if they're allowed there, I think different rules are going to make it really confusing for our riders. So, we need to consider how that will work. And I think, obviously, Arlington and Alexandria have learned after 12 months of piloting that they do allow them on sidewalks with some provisions. So, I think it's worth recognizing that other people have learned after a year what's going to happen. So, some options I think we can consider. One, I think the simplest one is we could just ask scooters to either dismount or walk scooters when passing pedestrians. I think that was one of the comments we'd gotten from Mr. Williams. It's just a just basic courtesy. So, how do you interact between pedestrians and scooters? A second option could be adding those busy arterials, so that people can ride on those sidewalks. I think adding to that list might get tough, though. So, I think a question for the city attorney is whether that, that makes sense, because the list could just be very long. Here's all the streets we could ride sidewalks on. It's just hard for people to keep track of. Another option is, could we declare kind of the civic core, where we actually have pedestrian traffic, a no-scooter zone? I think that may be similar to what Alexandria has done. So, we could define, for example, Park Avenue and Little Falls, from kind of Virginia to Maple, potentially. Because we actually look at where we have pedestrian traffic in the city. Yes, we have some on 27, 29 and 7, but most of the pedestrian traffic is near that civic core. So, instead of doing the, the approach where we have to say, here are the sidewalks that you can ride, can we just declare no-scooter zone, which might be simpler to execute, and actually for people to keep track of, if we're concerned about mixing pedestrian traffic and scooters on sidewalks.
No scooters anywhere in the civic zone?
On the sidewalks. They would ride on the street there. How do people feel? I just think that a more moderate approach would make sense, to kind of really respect all modes of transportation.
Okay. Well, here, may I, Mr. Mayor?
Of course, of course.
Thank you. So, just to recap what the staff's recommended, line 26, they recommend no riding of motorized scooters or skateboards on sidewalks, except for Route 7 and Route 29. I think some of the folks who spoke tonight earlier were not aware necessarily of the staff recommendation. So, that's what we're being recommended to by staff. On line 118, it's interesting that respondents to the Portland Bureau of Transportation User Survey ranked sidewalks as their least preferred place to ride, and bike lanes their preferred place to ride. What I want to say in relation to all of this is, I've always felt like I've been in the business of transforming a suburb into a more urbanized place. You know, we heard it tonight, and, you know, it's most concentrated in intense form with the West End. But, you know, this is a version of that story also. And what we lack here, I think, is a critical mass of non-cars on our, call them what you want to, minor arterials, that make those streets feel safer for cycling, and now scootering. So, I would see this, as the staff recommends, as an opportunity to push the envelope and create an environment on streets like West and Lincoln, and all the ones that were mentioned, Hillwood before, an expectation among car drivers that they're not the only horse in the, in the corral, and that they do need to be mindful of other vehicles. You know, I can't improve on what I said earlier about sidewalks, sidewalks for walking. I'm willing to compromise to allow scooter riding on sidewalks on 7 and 29, somewhat reluctantly, because honestly, our sidewalks along Broad Street, and certainly on 29, are substandard, and really unsafe for a wheeled vehicle. They're poorly lit, not necessarily very well-maintained in some areas, particularly on 29. And I just don't see them as good places for any kind of wheeled vehicle. I wouldn't even consider bicycles to be very safe. I mean, they're telephone poles that are plopped right smack dab in the middle of the sidewalks. So, I mean, I'm viewing what's been proposed here as, as the compromise, which acknowledges that, you know, I suppose, in 7 and 29, we're still some years away from vehicles taking note of other smaller vehicles. But, I certainly would like to see us encourage, and I would see scooters as the opportunity to wedge movement of vehicles on Columbia, and Park, and West, and Lincoln, and Hillwood, all those streets, from the metro stations especially. Think about, just about every one of those streets, you can get from East or West Falls Church to your house without even having to get on 7 or 29, if you use those minor arterial streets. And I'd like to encourage their use by scooters, bicycles, and, you know, any other innovative transit that might come along down the line. So, I would like to see us adopt the ordinances both before us tonight. All right. Other comments? Mr. Snyder?
Sure. First, a comment about the non-ordinance part, the, the resolution. I would like to see the addition of an insurance provision around line 476 that would require some minimum liability coverage provided by the owner of the vehicle, of the e-scooter, that would cover the negligent activities of the renter. The reason why is that I'm not entirely sure that there's insurance coverage on behalf of the renter, either under homeowners or automobile insurance. And using Uber as an example, Uber provides, I'm not saying we have to go this high, but Uber provides a million-dollar liability coverage, not only on the actions of the company, but also on the actions of the driver. So, I would like to add some minimum liability requirement on the part of the owner of the, the lessor, if you will, of the scooter, to cover some, at least, minimum liability coverage for the renter. I think that's very important, because the only liability coverage right now they're providing is coverage from, to protect the corporation, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, and that the corporation then shifts the liability to the user of the vehicle. Am I reading that right? So, I think it's reasonable to say, if you're in the business of renting these, that you should cover not only your activities, which will probably, in most cases, be negligible or nonexistent, and you also provide some minimum liability coverage for the renter of the scooter. So, that would be a recommendation to strengthen that. Otherwise, I think that's pretty good, and we've got to get something going here, because if we don't, we have no regulatory authority whatsoever, as of January 1. So, I, I, I would urge that we add something along that line. It can be worked out later, the exact number, but I do think that the owner of the vehicle ought to carry some liability coverage that protects the renter. Otherwise, there may not effectively be liability coverage. And people would end up, you'd bring an action against the parent of the teenager. The parent doesn't have any liability coverage, so guess what? In the case of a serious injury, it could wreck that family's income. So, just a thought. On the ordinance, you know, I've thought a lot about this. The reality is, these things don't do well on sidewalks, and they don't do well mixing with trucks and cars either. So, it's a real challenge for us. But, I do think, I'd like to get this ordinance moving, and perhaps the kind of fine-tuning that's been talked about that we can do. But, to me, a fundamental point of this whole package is that we protect our sidewalks where appropriate. We also protect our e-scooter users where that's appropriate. So, I hope, I hope that we can move this ordinance tonight with the recognition that we'll work with Letty's ideas and others to see what else we can do over the course of doing this. But, I'd like to see this in place at the same time that the, the pilot is in place. Thank you.
So, let me just make sure I understand. So, are you saying now you support the ordinance as proposed with no riding on sidewalks, except on Lee Highway and Broad Street?
To, in order to get the vehicle moving, but if we need to add some additional streets, or if we need to say, for example, if there's a bike lane there, that the scooter would have to use the bike lane, but I understand the bicyclists may not like that. I don't really know. But, that would give you another, another sort of approach. In other words, if there's a bike lane, the e-scooter user has to use that bike lane. That would be another approach. I don't want to micromanage that tonight, but I do feel we need to get this vehicle moving.
Okay. Other comments? Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yep. So, I was fairly adamant a few weeks ago about not allowing... Yep. So, I was fairly adamant a few weeks ago about not allowing these scooters on sidewalks. And through a number of conversations and some hand wringing and thinking about it and trying to be practical, I'm intellectually honest enough to say that I have changed my mind on this matter. Certainly not ready for an outright ban of e-scooters on sidewalks. However, will reserve the right to change my opinion if it becomes a problem. I think where we're at right now is trying to create a solution for a problem that does not yet exist. Furthermore, just from a pure scientific perspective, we're talking about a pilot, and I look at it as a pilot for a way to collect data, to establish the best policy at the end of that pilot period. And by not implementing a more liberal approach to studying the impact of scooters in the city, I feel like we will not be able to make the best educated decision at the end of that pilot period. Furthermore, safety in all modes of transportation, I would like for people to be able to use their best judgment in what is the safest passage through this city. And when I sat down and thought about the number of scooters that may be forced into streets and all of the dangers that lie there, regardless of age and operator, I was not prepared to be able to make the decision to restrict folks and to be prescriptive about keeping them on sidewalks. So, with that being said, I don't support an outright ban. I certainly support any middle ground on Ms. Hardy's recommendations. I would be supportive of that. But I think an outright ban on sidewalks runs counter for a couple of different points that I just made. But again, will reserve my right to change my mind if a problem actually does present itself. So, thank you for those in the community that took the time to get my ear and explain exactly why I was somewhat misguided in presenting additional information. And I think that, from my standpoint, this is probably the best way to go, at least in the near term, for this particular pilot program. But again, I'm open to a middle ground that gets us moving, as Mr. Snyder has said, this vehicle forward. And Kerry, thank you, by the way, for just the mountain of work that you've put in to this. I feel like we spent a substantial amount of time to get this right, and I want to thank you for that because you have done a fantastic job of capturing all of the comments and requests that we've made over the many months leading up to this. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Z, do you have any thoughts on the sidewalk issue?
Oh, well, thank you, Mayor. I've got plenty of thoughts, but in the interest of time, I'm not going to share them all. But thank you for asking. I kind of land where Mr. Duncan is. Sidewalks are for walking. We certainly don't see many of bike share riders riding their bicycles on the sidewalks. As a matter of fact, I've tried to ride my personal bicycle on the sidewalks, in particular, many sidewalks that have been named tonight. Lincoln, Little Falls, Great Falls, and, you know, they're aptly named because, you know, I've fallen many times riding my bicycle on the sidewalk. And so, I guess I had to say that. And there are places on Broad Street that, quite frankly, aren't that broad. So, and that's one city council member of power, probably less than a quarter horse. So, I can't imagine what would happen if I were behind a 3-kilowatt motorized electric scooter. Man, I'd be doing wheelies down the sidewalks. So, I'm not adamant about completely restricting sidewalks only for pedestrians. But I think the greater harm is done if we, you know, and I agree, the pilot program is to collect data. So, where do I want to air? Do I want to air on the side of a few torpedo pedestrians? Or do I want to air on, you know, having a scooter run over? I mean, those are tough choices. I'm not sure I'm prepared to do that. But I would say that the prudent scooter rider will be a scofflaw at the end. If they perceive a danger, they'll be on the sidewalk. And good or bad, I've, you know, maybe I shouldn't be walking my dog during the dark hours of the morning. But that's when the scooter riders out there, too. And I don't want to be paranoid, but I do think they are hunting me down on the sidewalk. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Conley, you have something?
I just, one of the things I noticed in this most recent staff report, did you add that staff actually went and rode some scooters in Arlington and came into the city of Falls Church? Was that new or was that in a previous staff report?
No, that was in this staff report.
That was new?
Right.
So, you went and tested them and?
I had another staff member.
Okay. So, that is very thorough. So, I have to say that I've never ridden a scooter. Has anyone up here ever ridden on a scooter? A couple of you have?
I've got a couple of them.
Okay, okay.
I will say six miles an hour is a 10-minute mile, which is not that fast.
Yeah, but they're not going to go six miles an hour. It's not enforced.
But the point of it is, like, Mr. Z can talk about riding a bike, and I can talk about riding a bike. And when I ride a bike, I make a judgment call, like, this road is too dangerous. I'm going to ride on the sidewalk, and I'm going to look out for the people ahead of me. I can't talk about riding on a scooter in the same way. But I do think, I think it was in Brian Williams' letter where he talked about, it's easy to hop off a scooter and walk. So, I think a lot of this, we really have to rely on the judgment of the people that are using the scooters and the walkers and the, I mean, we have to have some assumption that the people that live in Falls Church that are going to be using the scooters are not complete idiots, that we can make some good judgment calls and look out for other people. That's kind of what we do here. So, and I don't know if that means we need to have a really good advertising campaign with some funny little signs around that remind people to be, you know, aware of their other modal neighbor or something. But I do think that, as Mr. Z just said, if we prohibit scooters from being on all sidewalks except 29 and 7, then we will have a whole community of scofflaws because people will make their best judgment call and hop on when they have to.
So, Mr. Snyder?
Yeah. Working downtown in DC, I have a fair amount of experience, and it's pretty hazardous down there for walkers and for everybody else. So, I hope we can move on this ordinance, but I also recognize that we need to do some significant discussions between now and when it comes up again, which I understand we can do.
So, I would say this. I mean, look, I don't feel strongly one way or the other. I have a feeling if we say scooters can't ride on sidewalks, they're going to. And I don't really have a problem with that. But if there's a conflict between a person or a person with a stroller and a scooter, I'd like the person who's walking with a scooter or with the dog or whatever to have, to kind of win that little thing. And so, I think this is going to take some fine tuning. Maybe there are other streets. Maybe it works on all streets. If people are considerate, you don't need a law about this. Where you need the law is where people aren't considerate. And I work in Arlington. I work in Clarendon. And, you know, most people are fine with scooters. I've always, I've almost been run over multiple times where I happen to work by people who are not considerate. And so, that's kind of where the rub comes in, is where the people who are not considerate of others, they're not sensible, they're, and so, that's what I think the law is mostly about. I don't think our police are probably going to be out trying to catch people who happen to be riding on a sidewalk when there's no one there and the traffic is bad or whatever else it is. I think this really comes down to when somebody's being inconsiderate. Someone runs into someone because they're not paying attention, and that's sort of where the law comes in. So, I guess if I were to air, I would air on a side of being more conservative, at least initially, initially, and then broadening the ability to use it as people show that they are responsible, that they are considerate, and then broadening this out. But I don't feel strongly about it, and I'm certainly open to a compromise that we could work out or something Ms. Hardy may propose. So...
May I ask?
Of course.
The city attorney, again, her interpretation of the language that is presented to us tonight in the sidewalks ordinance, TO 19-10. If we want to keep talking about this at some future date, not later tonight, if we pass it tonight, we can keep talking about it?
Yes. Tonight, it's here on first reading.
Right.
So, it will just be advertised. It's a fairly, tonight, I believe, and this is kind of council's decision, but I think what you have is the broadest possible prohibition that you would want is being advertised as the change.
Mm-hmm.
You could then adopt on December 9, anything from no change to this entire change. So, yes, there's room to discuss that. And then at second reading, which will be before you on, is scheduled for December 9.
December 9.
You could then adopt a version of some compromise or no ordinance and simply see how things go or the entire prohibition. So, you have a good amount of flexibility that will take some work before December 9 to get something teed up, maybe that has, although it may be done fairly simply.
Okay. Second question is Mr. Snyder's insurance concerns, which, you know, I share in spades. I mean, line 476 to 482 is the most damning line in the whole report, you know. I mean, it is, it's almost unimaginable that we're going to give carte blanche to, you know, one of these major, two or three of these major corporate players in the area of liability. I mean, I am concerned, however, that if we add language in that is well out of conformance with what our neighboring jurisdiction does, do, neighboring jurisdictions do, that that will, more than anything else we've talked about, put the kibosh on even having the opportunity to, you know, test out scooters here. I mean, is it staff's belief that if we have an insurance liability language that Arlington does not have, that we're, that will dry up the interest of the providers?
We haven't asked them, but we can, we can get more information about that.
So, again, if we, if, well, let me ask the city attorney. If we pass the language tonight and in two weeks we learn the answer to that question is whatever it is, do we have flexibility there?
The resolution on the policy is not expected to come back before you. We could put that in, and we could make an adjustment later if necessary because it is just a, it is a policy.
It's an administrative function.
It's just a resolution. It's a one-time thing. I mean, I think that putting something like that in there, I certainly understand the concern. I do think it would be problematic because I think within, I mean, the user agreements that the companies have and that they require their riders to sign have, do shift the liability or do protect the operators from any liability for the negligence of the riders. And that is the common practice throughout the industry, and we would be attempting to do something very different from that. I think it would be difficult, but I understand, you know, we can certainly talk with them and see about getting that in there.
Okay. Well, that's a helpful answer. I mean, if we end up having to go with the language that does not carry any insurance coverage, I really think that the community needs to be told that. And, you know, 50-point bold advertisements paid for by the scooter companies before anybody gets on one. I mean, you just look at line 176 about the incidents of accidents. What causes accidents? Alcohol, 29 percent. 29 percent? Excessive speed, 37 percent. Malfunction of the device itself is only 19 percent. So, you know, phone call and listening to music or a podcast, that's presumably, you know, another optional activity that the scooter rider might choose not to engage in if safety were an issue. And if they knew that if they hit somebody, they're going to be paying, you know, all their earthly possessions to settle the lawsuit. So, I mean, if we can't accommodate Mr. Snyder's reasonable concern, I think that we need to have a public information campaign that lets at least people in Falls Church know that it's a buyer beware kind of situation. I mean, Mr. Mayor, do you want somebody to make a motion or what?
Well, I mean, I guess what I would hope is we can get a consensus about what we want to do right now and then make a motion. I mean, do we have outstanding issues that other people want to continue to discuss? Or we have consensus? So, why don't we let Mr. Snyder finish the insurance section? You can, we'll move to the vice mayor.
Well, in dealing with the ordinance, I'd like to move it forward with the understanding that we're going to look at, you know, be, you know, analyze between now and December 9, other, you know, compromises that might come forward. So, that's what I'd suggest we do. If we don't act now, it's not going to be in line with when we do the pilot. And I think the two ought to go together.
Vice Mayor Conley?
Just a suggestion. What if lines 226 and 227 doesn't prohibit riding on sidewalks, but says that when scooters or motorized skateboards are on sidewalks, they must yield to pedestrians? That kind of puts the onus on the user of the device, protects walker, pedestrians, doesn't force people to break the law every time they hop on the sidewalk. What do people think of that?
Let's start by asking the city attorney. Is that something that's enforceable?
I would have to verify it. I will verify it. I believe it is. In fact, it's something that prohibiting the riding of scooters on sidewalks is required to be by ordinance. So, and I think it might be more enforceable if we require them to yield by ordinance, but we could also put that in the policy. But I just want to verify that that would be enforceable. But I believe it would, as I said here today.
Okay. What do people think of that, then?
So, you're saying we wouldn't actually have to have an ordinance to say that?
I think that's correct. That could be built into your policy for riders.
But so, how is that enforceable, then?
It would be, I think it would be difficult to, it's going to have the same difficulties in that the, who's going to be there to enforce it. But...
I mean, you couldn't even enforce it.
If you put it in the ordinance, it'll be more, well, you could, I suppose, take action against a rider. But you're right, an ordinance would definitely have more enforceability.
Can you even enforce a policy? I mean, could you go to court and say, I'm going to issue a fine based on a policy?
Probably not against the rider.
If that's who you want to enforce it against?
Right. That would be, yeah. So, I think you probably would want to put that in the ordinance if we could, yeah.
Okay.
Make sure I'm not confused. We're talking about the resolution to authorize the program, and we're saying on lines 226 to take out that line and add what? No?
I don't think so. I think what we're talking about...
Of the ordinance banning scooters on sidewalks.
The compromise, instead of banning them on sidewalks, to say they must yield to pedestrians on sidewalks. All right. So, what do people think of that?
I would support that.
I think if you potentially combine that with some other compromise, from my standpoint, I'm certainly willing to look at that. But I'm not, I have serious questions about its enforceability. And in total replacement of that for some sort of a ban, I, for one, can't support that.
Go ahead. If you've got anything. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt TR 19-33. All right. Let's open it up to public comment. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. We do have a motion on the table. Does anyone else have comments about the, either the proposed revision to the ordinance or anything else for that matter?
Yeah. Two clarifying things. One, I'm fine with the recommended change. I don't think it's enforceable. I don't think it's as enforceable as chasing people down who are not supposed to be on the sidewalk. But regardless, I get it. I mean, it's the spirit of it, and it's in there, and maybe it has, makes somebody think twice. For a practical standpoint, the ordinance TR-1933, which a motion has been made, if approving this program, which we're talking about here, does not mean that we're supporting banning the scooters on sidewalks.
That's correct.
Correct.
That, the ordinance, TO 1910, will be under a separate motion.
So, I can vote yes on 1933 and not ban scooters on sidewalks. That's what I thought.
That's correct. 1933 is the policy and the documents that would be used to put it into effect.
Okay.
So, you just made a motion regarding 1933. Is that right, Mr.?
Yeah.
All right. So, we have a motion. We have a second. Unless there's any further discussion, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yes? I move to grant first reading to TO 19-10.
I move to grant first reading to TO 19-10. It's scheduled second reading in public hearing for December ninth, 2019, and advertised the same according to law.
Second.
We have a second. All right, is there any member of the public that wishes to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. So this is the actual ordinance that would ban scooters on sidewalks save for Route seven and Route 29?
Correct.
Okay. So is there any comment, any further discussion about this? Yes, of course.
All right, so I just need to clarify this because while I do not agree with this ordinance, I do think that there's room to talk further on this ordinance.
Correct.
So if I vote yes, that keeps the discussion going for another two weeks.
Correct, it will come.
So that we can hopefully possibly work out a compromise that we find agreeable. If I vote no, then it's off the tape. I mean.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, so.
I, I just want to clarify that just a little bit in that if the compromise will have to be within the scope of what you have advertised as an ordinance.
It'd be more, it'd be something that would be what we've already proposed and maybe adding two streets or adding more streets or something like that.
Right. It would be between no bans on riding on sidewalks and a complete ban except for 29 and seven. And something in the middle, we can reach a compromise and you would be able to do that. But if it were something, if, if council went to something totally outside of that, we might have to start a new first reading.
Okay. So are there any comments or discussion about this? I would just say if this does pass, I hope we can work together to try to find a compromise that everybody can get on board with before this goes to second reading. Any other comments? All right, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
No.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
No.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
No.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
The motion carries four to three. Thank you.
All right, let's keep on moving. It's only 11:35.
On this one, since I think everyone's agreed it needs more work and the CACT meets this week and they're a primary body for making recommendations to us, could we farm this out to them to give us a recommendation on what a compromise might look like?
Could we, if we have time to do more staff work, which we may not, I know that the objective here was to try to clean this off the, off the table tonight. If we're going to consider other streets, could we get an update on what the bicycle situation is on those streets? You know, do we have sharrows? Do we have lanes? Do we have anything? Just so we are not just picking our five favorite streets that we personally think, you know, could we look at the condition of the sidewalks on those streets? Like West Street has sidewalks on one side, but not both. Hillwood has sidewalks on both. You know, each, each one of the streets, Columbia has sidewalks on neither in some places, I think. I mean, we need kind of an inventory of, of these minor arterials. And the advantage of having that is it also educates us about streets that really we want to try to encourage car traffic to take note of other vehicles on the road.
And your delegate is going to wear a helmet and a scooter at the same time, right? Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the next item. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have TR-19-36, resolution to endorse the City of Falls Church Fiscal Year 2024-2025 application for $6.9 million in Northern Virginia Transportation Authority, NVTA, 70% funding for the West Falls Church Access to Transit and Multimodal Connectivity Project.
Mr. Shields?
Ms. Messer is going to do staff for the next two and we'll be very short on them.
Yeah, so what I was going to do is you have three items related to the NVTA, 70% funds. The city clerk has read out one. My comments will be applicable to all three. Be open to questions. I'll be short and sweet and then you can take appropriate votes for the records. As you know, we have the opportunity to apply for 70% NVTA funds. The grant applications have been submitted consistent with adopted CIP in the August 12th transportation meeting that we had where we're prioritizing with council, the transportation liaison council members, the applications. For the one that the city clerk has read out, that is for the Shreve Road West WOD near the 10 acres. That was council's consensus of the four members to be number one priority. That is the way the city staff submitted it. The second one is for Park Avenue for multimodal improvements, the Great Street, and that was submitted as second. Those are the two city direct applications. Any NVTA application requires a resolution by the governing body to support your own applications, as well as the third one that's before you is the Fairfax County application and an adjacent locality also, NVTA looks for a supporting resolution. That one, the Fairfax County has put in for phase one of the Ring Road improvements in the Seven Corners. And that staff report outlines the components of the program, but also in the resolution you'll see the points that the city would recommend the county take into consideration for the support in terms of coordinating with staff on the technical designs, looking at Hillwood, looking at the BRT, and making sure we try to long-term address Route 50 trucks. So that in a quick synopsis is three resolutions that are before you that would require separate actions, but would support 6.9 million in TR-19-36, 8.3 million in TR-19-38. And then for the county one, TR-19-37, it's a $94 million grant application. As the council members are aware from the Fairfax County meeting, Jim Snyder was there along with the city manager, so we can answer any follow-up questions you may have on the county's application.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Snyder, do you have anything to add to this?
I do, yeah. Let's pull out the county one, which is TR-19-37. I would urge the addition of one more target element. It's on line, it would be on line 183. And I would add, the goal is to prevent an increase in traffic on city streets, specifically Hillwood and Route seven, and reduce truck traffic on streets within the city. And I'd like that set as a goal for our work. I like everything else here, but the whole intention is to take traffic that would otherwise find it difficult to get onto Arlington Boulevard to, the Ring Road part would actually, the whole intention, as we've been advised by Fairfax County, is to move traffic on to Route 50 and take it 50 West. If that's not done right, the reality is you might move traffic on to Hillwood and Route seven. So I think we need a goal for our effort here, one among several goals, which is to, again, I would add, number four, the goal is to prevent an increase in traffic on city streets and roads and to reduce current truck traffic on city streets and roads.
Are you, are you with number 19-37 or which one are you looking at?
1937.
And I have it up on the screen right now for that section and then now therefore.
She read, she was discussing all three.
Okay.
Our two grant applications.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
And since she was discussing the third one, that's what I wanted to add.
Okay, that's fine, because I was thinking we were, yeah, yeah, I get it. That's fine. All right.
Does everybody understand what we're doing now? I'm not saying anything about 36 and 38. I'm really addressing 37 and lines, I'm urging the addition of some additional language at 183. And this is the, our, our agreement to go along with a Fairfax County proposal, which is their Ring Road. But I wanted to add, the goal, a goal is to prevent an increase in traffic on city streets and roads and reduce current truck traffic on city streets and roads.
Sure, that's fine by me.
And I would note that that was the intent of the language that we included in number one for impacts on city roads as well, residential as well as Broad Street and the truck. I think Mr. Snyder is just making a much more pointed clarification to the language the staff has before you.
Okay, anything else? Okay. All right, any other comments on any of these? Mr. Shields? Okay, so, Ms. Hardy, yes?
For TR-19-36, for the project on Shreve Road, do we have indication from Fairfax County staff that they also support this?
Yes, Fairfax County has the resolution, parallel resolution like we're doing for their application on the Board of Supervisors' agenda for November 19th. So it'll be next week. And my understanding is it has staff support as a recommendation and the new supervisor for that district and the outgoing one in the transition is both supportive. The county resolution, my understanding, will have some similar points to coordinate with the city to make sure we're addressing stormwater, property owners' issues, and ongoing maintenance because this will become a Fairfax County VDOT maintained improvement.
Great.
So it's to say that we'll coordinate just like our points on 38.
Yes, I've heard from a lot of county residents that they care about this. I think they're excited that we're pushing this forward. But I think also for people who are walking to Metro or are students who are getting to the middle school and high school, this is important in light of especially the pedestrian fatality that got a lot of coverage over the summer. One more question. Given that that one is going to be shared across jurisdictions, do we prorate essentially the amount of money then to by jurisdiction? Or does it all count against us since we're proposing it?
It actually will count towards, not against, towards Fairfax County long-term benefit because pedestrian grant applications are scored differently than roads. So even if we're submitting it and we're maintaining it, it'll go towards Fairfax County's 10-year long-range benefit.
Terrific, thank you.
And just as a side note, Fairfax County does have an application in. It's for the TAP program, not 70% to do improvements down on Shreve Road near the elementary school. And then I had a meeting with VDOT on Friday and they're going to send me details, but they've done several walkthroughs and they're going to do some interim improvements on Shreve Road and so we'll be able to provide you those details. That's more signage, striping, and some interim safety improvements.
So if this gets to the NVTA stage, I assume you'll let us know when we need to rally the community to get support on this?
Yeah, right now they'll go public. Input is scheduled for March. Right now it's under staff review.
Thank you.
All right, so we need to take these separately motions, three different motions for these?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak to any of these three items? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. I see you there, Jim. You're welcome to speak if you'd like.
Yeah, Mr. Snyder, you mentioned in your first iteration, Hillwood Avenue. I would just say in our discussions as a part of that task force representing the city, we did call out the complication of having Hillwood connect with the Ring Road, providing more complexity and also providing a very convenient cut through through the city. And I would say that the tendency has been for it to keep popping up as an open connection to the Ring Road as opposed to being closed or, or, you know, more optional. So I think unless we say that we'd like that explored explicitly, it's going to keep popping up as a connection. It is a very convenient cut through. It also makes it more difficult for pedestrians to work on that part of the Ring Road if Hillwood is left open.
Right.
So do you want to make a change to?
You had mentioned in your first iteration about additional traffic on Hillwood and seven, I think. In your last iteration, you didn't mention those two specifically.
So do you want to make any changes?
I assume the last iteration would include Hillwood and Route seven. All right, I'm talking about all city, I'm, and I'm talking about city streets and roads.
Yeah, I think if you're willing, we could call out Hillwood, Route seven, and all city roads because I think Mr. Snyder's point is somehow in the planning, Hillwood doesn't get, always talked about as being closed. I will call out in their application, they listed Hillwood as one that we could, could be considered for closing. I think Mr. Snyder's point to Councilman Snyder's is just to call out Hillwood. So it's a real clear message to the county that that is a specific road that you would focus on as well as all.
Sure. When I, maybe for simplicity's sake, when that item comes up, I'll read out the particular language and I'll add that. Thanks. Yep.
All right, why don't, do we have a motion regarding at least the first item?
I move to adopt TR-19-36. Second.
We've got a second. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Counsel, seven to zero passes. Thank you, counsel.
All right, another motion?
I move to adopt TR-19-37 with the following additional language at line 183. Four, a goal is to prevent an increase in traffic on city streets and roads, including Hillwood Avenue and Route seven slash Broad Street, and to reduce truck traffic on city streets and roads to include Route seven. And I don't, are we getting truck traffic on Hillwood?
Sometimes, yes.
Yeah, including, including Route seven and Hillwood Avenue. So it's no additional traffic overall is the goal, and a reduction in current truck traffic on those two as a goal, recognizing that we'll do our best to achieve those things. Is that agreeable to people then?
Yeah.
All right, with that revision, did you make a motion? You did make a motion.
Yeah, I move to adopt TR-19-37 with that additional language.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
And there was a third, was there not? Did we miss one?
Move to adopt TR-19-38. Second.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mr. Z?
Yep.
Mayor Tarter?
Yep.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Next item?
We have TR-19-39, resolution providing assurances regarding Virginia Department of Transportation land use permits.
Mr. Shields?
For this item, the city is building a sewer line in a Fairfax County road on Shreve Road. VDOT would normally require a bond to be posted if we were a private company. Localities, however, can instead have a resolution just saying that we will follow their land use permit requirements. This resolution would do that.
All right, any member of the public wish to speak to this matter? Seeing none is closed to the public, do we have a motion?
Move to adopt TR-19-39.
We have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Duncan on the second. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mr. Z?
Yep.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. Is there anyone wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? All right, do we have a motion regarding the consent agenda?
May I remove all the items that are consent agenda?
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mr. Z?
Yep.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right, is there any business not on the agenda, any standing regional committee, council liaison reports?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, here we are. Okay, come on, get up here. You got seven minutes.
So we're going to give an abbreviated first quarter financials because the first quarters are, there's not a lot of data in them, but we'll just touch on personal property and, and other notes of interest. But there is one note that we want to bring to the council's attention as well on the, on the spending side and relating to debt service. And so we'll touch on that as well, but.
Good evening, Mayor Tarter and members of the council. So for the first quarter, for this fiscal year, fiscal year 20, so far, the results show that we have, we are on track to meet our overall budget projections for the key revenue indicators. And with actual collections for the first quarter this year remaining flat over the same period of
flat over the same period last fiscal year on, overall. And the personal property tax is the one I'd like to call out, that we normally find out about in the first two, three months, as we have sent our assessments out, is under budget by 2.8%, and it's about the same as the first quarter, or the assessments for last year, fiscal year 19. The assessed value of the cars is up, and which is offset by a decrease in the business personal property. The similar trend that we saw last year as well, decrease in business personal property assessments due to depreciation. Also, as expected, we are seeing higher than normal receipts for permit fees, due to the high school construction project that we got. The permit fees are 71% over budget, and 110% over last year's first quarter actuals. And on the expenditure side, there are no aberrations so far on the department budgets projections. We are so far hoping for it to be on track. However, with the timing of the 2019 bond issuance last week, we are now required to make, we are not required to make any principal and interest payments in fiscal year 2020 that we normally make in January, which will result in an overall underspending of $4.66 million in debt service for this fiscal year, which constitutes of $2.9 million from capital reserve, and $1.7 million from tax-supported debt service that we had, as we had budgeted in fiscal year 20. So to wrap that up, once again, these results are inconclusive, and quite premature to predict any trend on, especially on the revenues. We will continue to monitor these and bring to you as part of the next steps when we bring our revenue projections at the joint board, school board, and city council meeting on December 2nd, and followed by a budget guidance. And budget, proposed budget that'll come to you on March 9th will have a little bit better data for the current year revenue projections, performance. With that, I'll wrap up my report and open for any questions that you may have.
All right, questions? Comments? Okay, does everyone understand what we just heard? Basically, the bond issuance, given its timing, meant that there's not a second payment, right? So that payment that would have happened in January is now basically gone away. It'll make a payment in July, as we would have ordinarily, but you budgeted making a payment in January and July, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's a good segue into my second update to you on the bond issuance. Can I, update on the bond issuance? No, that was part of the.
Forget about that.
Say what you got.
Okay. So the issuance for the 2019 General Obligation Public Improvement and Refunding Bond Series B closed last week on November 7th for a total proceeds of $125.4 million. The actual trading was conducted on October 22nd with seven bids that we received. The lowest winning bid was from Morgan Stanley, with an effective interest rate of 2.71%. That was the true interest cost overall. It included, the terms of the issuance is 30 years for the high school project, 20 years for all remaining projects, including the library renovation, acquisition of Fellow's property. The bonds will bear interest from November 7th, 2019, and will be payable semi-annually January and July, just as we discussed, starting in July 15th of 2020, until final maturity in fiscal year 2049. These bonds include a call provision for optional redemption after seven years, which will start on July 15, 2027. So essentially, we can refinance after July 15, 2027, for no penalty for, at that time. A portion of the proceeds have been used to pay off the 2019 note of 20 million that was issued in June as the council action, so we have paid that off, and we just hold this debt now. The 30-year debt is amortized at a level debt service, while the 20-year is amortized at a level principal. And the total cost of issuance is estimated at $515,000, which includes the underwriters' fees, the legal fees, the financial advisors' costs, the credit rating agency fees, everything. The total debt service over the 30-year period is $179.3 million, which includes total interest of roughly $60 million. That concludes my update.
All right, any questions or comments? Vice Mayor Conley?
Just one question regarding the library. We had an earlier speaker, Mr. Jeff Peterson was here, and he mentioned in his comments that one of the nice benefits of the low interest rate on the bond is that the cost of financing the library is considerably less than what was in the original models. And I know we've talked about that regarding the high school financing, but not right now, but could you let us know what the savings is on the high school, or, I'm sorry, on the library, as we go forward to talk about what we're going to do with the library in the next couple of months?
Sure. I mean, you have to realize the savings is versus the projection.
Right, I know it's versus the projection. Right, right.
Okay.
All right, are there any other questions or comments? Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, I think thanks to the council, and particularly to Dan Z's advocacy, the school is a net zero.
Ready.
Project. So I'm wondering if in the future, if we look at projects that have such a great environmental element, if we could look for potential green bond funding, and that may open up different avenues for even better interest rates. But I, it's hard to believe we could beat this interest rate, and I'm not saying at all that, but all I'm doing is using that as an example, that we ought to think about that potential market.
Noted.
All right, other comments or questions? All right, thank you for sticking around so long, and for hanging with us, and your fine work. So is there anything else anyone wants to discuss this evening? Any reports, comments, requests, anything of that nature? If not, maybe it's time to go home. It is 12 o'clock exactly.
We have some minutes.
Oh, we have some minutes to approve? Well, let's take a look here. All right, whatever minutes there are. Mr. Duncan?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the minutes of the meeting of Monday, May 13, 2019, as presented.
All right, do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the meeting minutes of Monday, September 9, 2019, with[1772.15]